Comply with that.
Opponents of the ban, some of them medical marijuana users, told council members patients are often too sick or don't have the funds to grow their own medicine.
You really don't understand what it's like to be in our shoes. You don't know what it's like for us every morning to wake up and not being able to plan your day because you have to plan your day over your pain issues.
And opponents of an outright ban have Councilman Paul Corretts on their side.
I think the elements in Mr. Weisar's motion really provide virtually no access, but perhaps that's something we'll have to deal with for a few months. I get the sense that with the council, the overriding concern is getting rid of the problematic dispensaries.
Corretts put forth a separate proposal, also approved by the council, that requires the council to revisit the issue at a later time, to consider allowing 182 pre-existing dispensaries to remain open. They were ones in good standing with the city back when a moratorium on new pot shops was enacted in 2007. It's a proposal Councilman Dennis Zine supports.
What we do for the public on the Compassion Use Act is show the compassion for those people who legitimately need it under the controlled circumstance, and then the other locations that are out of control would be put out of business by the authorities.
Police Chief Charlie Beck told council members he does not foresee a problem with enforcing the ban, anticipating that most dispensaries will obey the shutdown order. The ban will take effect 30 days after it's signed by the mayor. Hospices and licensed clinics will be exempted from the ban. Well, like it or not, media scrutiny is part of the job when you work in law enforcement, and that's why recently the LAPD invited those who usually report on them to spend a day in their shoes. Gil Reyes takes us to the LAPD's media training day to help journalists better understand officers' actions.
He needs to get out and you need to get... What are you laughing at?
LAPD officers simulating a confrontation with an armed suspect. Police decide to end it using deadly force. If this had really happened, the officer's decision to shoot might be scrutinized by the press. That's why members of the media are here to walk in police's shoes for a day.
An idea of how our police officers are trained, what kind of tools they have, the effectiveness of those tools, and how our officers are trained so that they can be more accurate in their reporting while they're out there.
Members of the press took part in simulated life-or-death split-second decision-making on this media training day. During this video exercise, one journalist decided shooting was necessary because an armed suspect approached with the presumed intent of hurting her. Her actions later examined.
You shot him because he was coming at you.
Yeah, because he had the ability and the opportunity and the desire.
They're able to look at different scenarios and decide whether it's a shoot or a no-shoot situation.
The press also learned lessons on crowd control and the benefits of using tasers over firearms. ABC 7 eyewitness news reporter Leo Stallworth found out the hard way.
Oh, God! Oh, that hurts! Whoa!
Tasering could be just as effective in overpowering a suspect.
Ah!
To shoot or not to shoot, oftentimes it's a tough call, but at least now the media better understands these types of situations before reporting on the outcome. In Granada Hills, Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Media training day took place at the Ed Davis Training Facility in Granada Hills. A family is grieving the loss of their father who was murdered in his workplace. Cindy San Luis explains how the city's helping authorities find the suspect.
I just want justice, that's it, and to please help and not be afraid to call.
Mauricio Lopez and his four siblings and mother are asking the public for help in finding his father's murderer. Raul Lopez was killed on June 29th at the Hoagies and Wings Restaurant in Sherman Oaks, where he worked as a cook.
He was shot following a verbal dispute with numerous patrons inside the restaurant. And we're looking for five males of African-American descent, driving a black Cadillac Escalade.
Raul Lopez should be here today. He should be holding these children. He should be part of their lives, but it was taken away by someone who we could now prosecute and bring to justice.
The Los Angeles City Council has put up a $50,000 reward for information that leads to the arrest and conviction of the suspect who shot and killed Raul Lopez. The gunman was described as African-American and in his late twenties or early thirties with a skinny build and short hair, about five feet six inches to six feet tall. It's hoped someone out there knows this man.
I don't need to know your name or where you are or who you are. I just need a phone call. The point is in the right direction.
Lopez's family members and Hoagies and Wings have set up a memorial fund for the slain father of five. The restaurant said it will provide donation boxes at the Sherman Oaks and La Cienega Boulevard locations. The restaurant will also be donating 10% of all online orders from the month of July from its Sherman Oaks location to Lopez's family. For LA This Week, I'm Cindy San Luis. If you have any information that can help authorities, you're urged to call LAPD Van Nuys Homicide Detectives at 818-374-9500, or 877-LAPD247. And an update on a story we've been reporting on, the city's efforts to stop car dealerships from leaving town. Anita Bennett tells us about a plan city leaders say is good for business and good for the city.
As workers at this new Kia dealership downtown repair cars, Los Angeles Mayor Antonio Villarosa joins them to sign a new city ordinance into law.
We're here today to say that downtown Auto Row is back. In fact, the number of dealerships on Auto Row has more than doubled over the last seven years.
The increase follows a series of steps by LA leaders to lure auto lots away from the suburbs, and that includes the newly signed ordinance that exempts new car dealerships from LA's gross receipts business tax.
For too long, surrounding cities have used LA's broken tax system to lure businesses and jobs away from us, but we're here today to say that stops right here, right now, we're going to compete and we're going to win.
The new ordinance is also bringing in new jobs.
Kia of Los Angeles has created 75 new jobs and will generate over $600,000 in sales tax revenue to the city of Los Angeles. That's equal to about one-sixth of the total revenue lost by the elimination of the city business tax to the new car dealers.
Over the past 25 years, LA lost 95 dealerships to neighboring cities that have lower business taxes, but by dropping the gross receipts tax, city leaders say they're now on the fast track to bringing those businesses back. I'm Anita Bennett for LA This Week.
City leaders say the money they lose from the gross receipts tax will be offset by the extra sales tax. How does the name Hollywood still capture the imagination of so many, and how does it still attract tourists the world over? The Hollywood Chamber of Commerce thinks it knows why.
It's because Hollywood does it differently. At least that was the theme of the Hollywood Chamber of Commerce's 2012 Hollywood Economic Development Summit held at the Roosevelt Hotel.
There's a lot that we're doing that's differently just because of the nature of this community.
The annual summit, which serves as a progress report for Hollywood, put the spotlight on several new ventures, including new businesses that have moved to Hollywood, as well as new projects and developments that enhance the lives of those who live in the community. One of those projects is the East Cowanga Alley, which has made such a transformation from a dumpster alley to a pedestrian alley that it's earned itself a nickname, Eka Alley.
Eka Alley, the first alley in Los Angeles that's been renovated and turned out into a public thoroughfare. We're talking about student housing and some of the latest developments in that meeting student housing. So there will be a lot of things that we're going to be talking about today that people aren't aware of and that aren't being done in other communities.
But the event's most talked-about topic was the Hollywood Community Plan approved by the city council just days before the summit. Mainly, the controversial plan, which serves as a blueprint for planning and development in Hollywood, allows for the construction of skyscrapers where they were prohibited before.
The plan passed unanimously. And while unfortunately it probably will end up in court, and that was an inevitability no matter how many revisions were made, we have a good chance now of seeing a future in which we are ready for growth if it comes.
Many opponents of the plan fear future developments will mean even more traffic congestion for the area, something Garcetti addressed at the summit.
I assure them that we have the same values which I know in this room that we hold, of increasing green space, of reducing traffic, of bringing good amenities to the neighborhoods that comprise Hollywood, and preserving that history that makes Hollywood so special.
But as the councilman reminded summit attendees, Hollywood is more than the community plan. The ideas of those who live and work in Hollywood are what make Hollywood Hollywood.
The summit was the chamber's 18th year holding the event. As for the Hollywood Community Plan, as Councilman Eric Garcetti anticipated, there are in fact several lawsuits that have recently been filed challenging the plan. The Los Angeles Department of Water and Power reaches a milestone in its quest to provide renewable energy. Rasha Goel has more on how Angelinos will be getting more of their electricity from solar power.
This flipping of the ceremonial switch by the LADWP marks the completion of the Adelanto Solar Power Project. It's the largest solar power generating plant developed by any municipal utility in the nation, and it's now delivering renewable energy to Los Angeles.
It will power 3,300 homes with power for their annual consumption.
Located in the Mojave Desert, the 10-megawatt solar farm covers 50 acres of land. The Adelanto Solar Power Project is part of LADWP's power supply transformation, which requires replacing 70% of LADWP's power generation in the next 10 to 15 years. Part of that means transitioning out of coal power. The $48 million solar project was completed by the LADWP's own labor forces.
The success of this project being on time, under budget, in a time when money means so much to our customers is really an outstanding achievement.
LADWP is already on the move with the 8.5-megawatt Pine Tree Solar Project, which is anticipated to start supplying power to Angelinos as early as this November. From Adelanto, I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
The Adelanto Solar Power Project will prevent about 13,000 metric tons of harmful CO2 emissions from being released into the atmosphere each year. That is equivalent to removing 2,500 cars from the road each year. And staying on the topic of cleaning our air, various environmental activists recently staged a rally in support of ending coal use and safeguarding a national park from coal mine expansion. Yana Kay has more.
Holding posters and signs, several environmental groups held a rally at City Hall urging city officials to pass two key environmental resolutions. One resolution would support actions by the Environmental Protection Agency to clean up toxic mercury from coal plants.
This is the first time in U.S. history that the EPA has put out regulations that will regulate carbon pollution as a danger to human health.
Environmental groups also urge city lawmakers to fight the expansion of a coal mine that they say would threaten Utah's tourism and research at Bryce Canyon National Park. They say stopping the expansion would also impact how LA uses energy.
To halt this expansion of strip mine on public land would be very helpful for the move to get Los Angeles off of coal.
Councilmember Paul Corretts opposes the mine expansion and wants to remove LA's dependence on coal, too.
I and other council members are trying to get us to wean ourselves off coal as quickly as possible and stop doing damage to the environment.
The city council adopted the EPA Clean Air Resolution and postponed the vote on the Bryce Canyon coal expansion to a later time. I'm Yana Kay for LA This Week.
And protecting our environment means also protecting our wildlife. Gil Reyes tells us about endangered butterflies that are thriving today thanks to preservation efforts at the Los Angeles International Airport.
You're looking at the endangered El Segundo blue butterfly. It feeds and lays its eggs on native sea cliff buckwheat, and right now, there's a fair amount of the plant on the west side of LA International Airport, on the coastal dunes. This 200-acre site on the outskirts of LAX is one of four main habitats in Southern California where this buckwheat is planted so the butterfly can survive. And since the program began here in 1976, the El Segundo blue butterfly has flourished. Back in the late 1970s, fewer than 500 of these insects existed here, but last year, their population jumped to about 125,000 butterflies. This year's official count isn't in yet, though it is expected to drop by a small fraction.
Doesn't mean that it's a bad year, it's just more of an average year compared to last year, which was a little wetter, so we had more buckwheat flowers, which yield more butterflies, and this year being a little drier, then buckwheat flowers are less, and so it looks like the butterfly numbers are less.
Entomologists say there's no cause for worry, as LAX spends about $250,000 a year to produce enough buckwheat to save the El Segundo butterfly from extinction, things with wings, great and small, thriving at the airport. At LAX, Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
The airport habitat is located along Pershing Drive beneath the LAX flight path. It's open to the public on special occasions only. A garden at a local police station is being made over with the help of some young community members with disabilities. It's a project that's not only transforming the garden, but also lives.
A garden at the Topanga area community police station badly in need of tender, loving care is undergoing a transformation into an eco-friendly garden with the help of a new partnership with the Theodore Payne Foundation, a nonprofit native landscape center in Sun Valley.
Some of you are aware the city is having some issues with financing, and so we've come up with some creative ways to take some things on that typically we don't have to take on.
The Topanga Boosters has helped with fundraising. 1-800-LONEMART, a local finance company, donated a trailer for the project.
Topanga Station sits on five to six acres of land, and it's going to take quite the effort to do that.
But those doing the hard work under the sun are student workers from the Los Angeles Unified School District's Miller Career and Transition Center. The center provides job training for mild-to-moderately disabled students ages 14 to 22.
Every one of these young men and young women that's sitting here has gifts, and they have talents, and it's our goal really to get them out into society so they can give back to society. They're an example to society around us on how much they can do when given the right opportunity.
And this opportunity to green this garden is also helping to grow some new friendships.
City leaders remember the victims of the Colorado Theater shooting. Men and women who work what can be a thankless job receive due recognition, and helicopters take center stage at a recent airshow. These stories and more in City Beat.
At the first council meeting soon convened the week after the movie theater shooting in Aurora, Colorado, LA City Council President Herb Wesson asked a packed house to observe a moment of silence in honor of the victims of the massacre.
So if we could have a moment of silence, everybody bow your head.
24-year-old James Holmes of San Diego is accused of killing a dozen people and injuring over 50 other moviegoers when he allegedly opened fire during a midnight showing of The Dark Knight Rises. Councilmember Richard Alarcone recently honored eight men and women who often go unrecognized despite their contributions to our society. They are local parole agents and probation officers who work with juvenile and adult offenders.
More than 135,400 people are under community supervision in Los Angeles. That's a daunting number and a very daunting task that must be managed by these folks.
Alarcone honored them in council chambers as part of National Probation, Parole, and Community Supervision Week. Councilmembers Tom Labonte and Eric Garcetti also honored in council chambers the Hollywood Entertainment District and its cleaning crew for helping to clean up the grimier side of Hollywood.
I get up early in the morning, and I drive the streets of my district, and when I come through Hollywood, I see your street cleaners, I see your guys who are cleaning graffiti off the walls, and I see Abel working through the hot sun.
Abel Peterson, who only has one leg and who was formerly homeless, is one of the hard-working employees of Clean Street, a street cleaning company hired by the Hollywood Entertainment District. Crew members power wash streets, remove graffiti, and polish the stars on the Walk of Fame. The American Heroes Airshow was held recently at the Hanson Dam Recreation and Sports Complex in Lakeview Terrace. The event honored men and women in uniform and civilian volunteers who operate helicopters in law enforcement, fire service, public safety, and national defense organizations. The airshow included a display of high-tech military and civilian helicopters, as well as parachute stunts.
The kids love crawling around in the helicopter and, you know, playing pilot for a day, so that's the funnest thing to see.
The only downside to the event seems to have been the dusty conditions created by the helicopter blades.
The annual summer camp hosted by Council President Herb Wesson gets closer to nature this year with plans for more kids to be able to attend in the near future. Gil Reyes reports from Camp Wesson.
Hi, Mom! Hi, Dad!
Greetings from summer camp, and this time, there are no bunk beds, no cabins to sleep in. It's just you, a tent, and the great outdoors of the San Fernando Valley.
We are experimenting a new camp experience. We're going to actually sleep out in the wild.
This summer organizers decided to switch it up a little bit. This year, we're at Hanson Dam Recreation Area, where about 80 inner-city kids are learning how to pitch tents for the very first time, tents they will live in for three days and two nights. All the fun supervised by adults, of course. Camp Wesson, now in its sixth summer season, gives at-risk youth from the councilman's district a chance to enjoy summer camp for free, while giving their parents in South Adams and surrounding areas a much-needed break from the kids.
We get to do, we get to do a lot of activities. We get to swim, we get to, we get to go hiking, we get to go horseback riding.
Councilman Wesson wants to expand his program to include children from outside his district. His office is pitching this idea to the Department of Recreation and Parks. Volunteers, park rangers, even the CHP are here to make sure children are safe and enjoying themselves.
He's been a big supporter of us, and whenever we can help him out and support him, we'll be there for him.
Councilman Wesson also patrols the campgrounds, promising to kick out any troublemakers if needed.
He says he could take us back home anytime, so I'm not going to be bad.
You guys got to behave.
Do you like him?
Do you like him?
Yeah.
Tell us about it.
He's strict. And he likes to follow, he likes for us to follow directions and for us to have a good time.
The campers hope to return next summer with possibly more kids from other neighborhoods joining in on the fun. At Camp Wesson, Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
In years past, Camp Wesson has taken place at Camp Hollywoodland in Griffith Park. A city-funded program called Project Save Help keeps the program going. A new exhibit at the LA Public Library takes a look at the beginnings of news as entertainment, and it started at least a century ago. Anna Marcos takes a look at the scandal phenomenon.
Where did all those celebrity rags get their taste for scandal? Well, they didn't invent it. A new exhibit called Edited for Publication highlights one of the trailblazers in sensational journalism, the Los Angeles Herald Examiner.
A lot of his papers were known for sort of depicting scandal and sensationalizing the news.
The Los Angeles Herald Examiner was created in 1962, when newspaper tycoon William Randolph Hearst merged two of his newspapers, but his publications already had a long track record of yellow journalism. Take the 1906 San Francisco earthquake and fire.
It's a scene of the city, and I guess in the smoke-filled sky, people were, you know, they had reported that people saw this cross in the sky, and this is all sort of speculation.
Objectivity and fair reporting, forget about it. These pictures were written on, painted on, changed, sometimes staged entirely, all for the sake of entertainment. And then there's all those photos of suicide jumps, spiced up with arrows to show the fall trajectory, because a plain old picture just wouldn't pop.
By trade standards, these photographs wouldn't pass the integrity test. You don't want to manipulate the news, you want to report the news as it is.
News as it is? Evidently, this viewer doesn't keep up with the scandal rags or the retouched photos on his favorite magazines. Seriously, is anyone's skin really this flawless? Do kids really take a leisurely hike with a snake around their necks? At its turn-of-the-century photos like this, that started it all. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
The exhibit will run through the end of August at the LA Central Library and the History Department. And some other things to do in our city: Shakespeare in the Park, a free evening concert downtown, and a family-friendly event at a local museum.
Head on over to the Skirball Cultural Center, where there are different performers ready to entertain you each Saturday and Sunday from now through September. On Saturday, August 4th, at noon and again at 2:00 p.m., you can see Kataran Chamuru perform songs, chants, and dances from the Pacific Islands Micronesian region in Skirball's beautiful outdoor amphitheater. The Skirball Cultural Center is located at 2701 North Sepulveda Boulevard. No reservations needed for the event, which is included with museum admission. For ticket and event information, go to skirball.org. And if you've always wanted to enjoy Shakespeare in the Park, now's your chance. The Independent Shakespeare Company is performing all summer long at Griffith Park every week from Thursday to Sunday at 7:00 p.m. as part of the Griffith Park Free Shakespeare Festival. The troupe will be performing A Midsummer Night's Dream on Sunday, August 5th. The performances are at the site of the Old Zoo at Griffith Park. There is no physical address, but the nearest ranger station is at 4730 Crystal Springs Drive. If you'd like to catch the comedy of errors, that ends Saturday, August 4th. For a detailed schedule, go to independentshakespeare.com. The performances are free, but donations are gratefully accepted. And if you like more free outdoor entertainment, California Plaza's Grand Performances Series brings to its stage Strands and Farah and Niyaz on Saturday, August 4th, from 8:00 to 10:00 p.m. The group blends the folk traditions of India and Iran with trance-inducing electronic beats from LA's own Carmen Rizzo. It's Latin America meets the Middle East. California Plaza is located at 350 South Grand Avenue downtown. You can go to grandperformances.org for a list of other upcoming events. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do.
And that's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you could catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We leave you now with more from Camp Wesson. See you back here next week for more of LA This Week. for more of LA This Week.
Illegal dumping? Call 311, the toll-free number for non-emergency services. 311, your one call to City Hall.
G'day, Troy McCavan from North Hollywood. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Good morning. Today is Tuesday, July 31st. Welcome to your Los Angeles City Council meeting. My name is Herb Wesson and I'm the president of the Los Angeles City Council. We meet, this council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday, most days at 10:00 a.m., and the public is welcome. So I want to welcome those of you that are here today to your City Hall and your Los Angeles City Council meeting. We do not have a, yeah, we do not have... Thank you, Mr. Herman, for that mercy applause. I appreciate it. We do not have a quorum as of yet, but we do have a presentation for today. And I want to ask Councilmember Weezer if he might want to get started. And if so, Mr. Weezer, the podium is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. And colleagues, I am pleased today to acknowledge a success story at the Department of Water and Power. Some of you may remember, a couple of years ago, we received some ARA funding to help save energy by weatherizing homes. And with that funding, we put to work 127 IBW Local 18 journeymen and women, trainees, supervisors, intake staff, and managers. The grant funding targeted 2,500 homes and this innovative program exceeded that goal. I am pleased to announce that as of a couple of months ago, this program weatherized more than 3,400 homes when the original target was just 2,500 homes. That means lower bills for those customers and less demand on DWP's energy supplies. As a result of this success, the state has granted the Department of Water and Power an additional $250,000 to continue the program. And we are here this morning to recognize the professionalism and dedication of this crew that made it possible. We want to recognize the accomplishments made possible by the ARA grant and the development of a model training program to carry out this work. So here with me today, and I got a number of people, Gus Corona, Senior Assistant Business Manager from IBW Local 18. We have DWP's new Director of Energy Efficiency, David Juco, and members of his team.
Come on, wake up, people. We could do a little better than that. You're IBW workers. You could do better than that.
And, Mr. President, I think you have to allow them some time to clap as well. I kept speaking when they started clapping, so I'll do my job as well. And most importantly, we have a number of trainees and members of IBW Local 18 in this room with us today. Let's give them a big round of applause. We also have members of the Repower LA Coalition. I want to thank them for bringing this to our attention. And so at this point, I would like to welcome up to the podium the Assistant General Manager of the DWP Power System, Mike Koya. Mr. Koya.
Thank you, councilmembers and councilful staff. At this point, I'd like everybody to stand, all the employees and representatives. Again, I just want to echo a little bit about the councilmembers' remarks and really just say that this is truly a team effort. We pulled together very quickly a lot of different organizations in DWP, energy efficiency staff, admin staff, the craftspeople. And more specifically, you know, we worked from day one with Local 18 because this was a new program. We had to come up with new guidelines and new rules and we had to flex some of our rules a little bit as far as who could do what. And more important, most importantly, it was the springboard for our UPCT, our Utility Pre-Craft Training Program, which again, now we're extending and using that as a model for expansion into other areas of work. And again, I think the most important benefit too is really we were able to touch the customers directly. And actually, when you go into the homes and the multi-units, and I think that's the biggest experience and I know that the crews related to me, that, you know, people truly appreciated the work was done and were very happy with the quality of work and the attendance that was given. So again, we've used this opportunity to springboard. Now we're transitioning from a grant program to a DWP-funded program. And again, we're using that as a model for expansion into more residential units and also our small business customers as well. And I also wanted to bring up one of the trainees, the Utility Pre-Craft Trainees, and I wanted him to relay a little bit about his personal experiences with the program. His name is Steve Motta.
Good morning, councilmembers. Good morning, staff. My name is Steve Motta. I am one of the UPCTs involved in the training program here with IBW Local 18 and Department of Water and Power. I would just like to say that the training program has been a great deal for myself and as long as my colleagues and coworkers here and as long as with the staff here with LADWP to help give back and put forward what we've been doing for the visualization program to the communities such as District 14 and to all the other communities that we will be going forward and working with. During the training, it's given me completely just an outlook and better knowledge of what we do and how we give back to the city of Los Angeles. And at this point, I hope the program goes forward and we stick together and we go forward with this program all the way through. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much and congratulations, Steve, and congratulations to everyone at DWP who made this possible. This is not only a success story that brought more skills to some of our workers, but also kept our bills low for some folks who need it and overall let our city have less demand for our energy, which is a very good thing for everyone, not only for the trainees, not only for the homes that got the weatherization, but everyone benefits through the successful program. And on behalf of the City Council and the city, I want to congratulate LADWP and IBW Local 18 for a successful program. And we look forward to more ways that we continue to reduce our demand for energy. And thank you, congratulations. And particularly to all the trainees, congratulations to all of you.
Mr. Weezer. We do have a couple of members that would like to say a few things.
Sure.
I just have one question. With all, anyway, welcome, guys. But with all of you being here, who's minding the store? Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And sit down and relax for a moment. Michael, great leadership by the management of DWP and IBW and Brian Darcy and everybody there to put this together. I started as a student professional worker in 1974. And the opportunity that you have in this may lead to something greater for you and your family, which is so important. And the city is founded on water and power and the importance for people. And to have energy efficiency and help in housing is so key to it. So I wanted to stand and thank each and every one of you. And I have one request, Michael. I want you to ask that all of them go up to the Tom Bradley Tower because Mr. Bradley would be happy to know this program exists because he fought for this type of program all his career. And when they go around and look at the city, you can look up to the John Farrow Building at 111 North Hope, and it's only 15 stories. It was supposed to be 18, but this Board of Water and Power didn't want to go to be higher than City Hall. They thought about it, but they didn't. But there's a beautiful new park that now has transformed our county buildings. This is the largest concentration of government buildings outside our nation's capital here in Los Angeles. But if this all would not happen, we would have welcomed the world in '32 in the Olympic Games or welcomed the world in '84 in the Olympic Games if it wasn't for Mulholland and the others that built water and power. Water and power makes the city run. So good luck to all of you. Work hard and take advantage of any opportunity. And congratulations to all who put it together. Thank you, Michael. Thank you, everybody involved. Thank you, Jose Weezer.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much and thank you, Mr. Labange, our great city historian. And thank you, Mr. Weezer, for bringing Repower LA. Congratulations to the department, to Local 18, the leadership, and all our journeymen that are here. You know, this is a triple bottom line because we save our customers money. We actually produce some money in the pockets of workers who need it and we do something good for the environment. And if you don't think LA can do large things, we always talk about on the water side, which I'm sure is, you're in some people's homes you help them know about too. We consume the same amount of water today as we did almost 25 years ago with a million more people because we got more efficient. We got low-flow toilets. We showed people how to conserve water. We conserve energy. It means we don't have to put another dirty coal plant up someplace. It doesn't, it means we don't have to go and invest the millions of dollars. If we can do it right in the homes where people are today, you're not only helping them out, but you're making sure that you have jobs for the future. So congratulations on what you've done for yourselves and your families. Congratulations, Mr. Weezer, on your leadership on making this happen. Let's continue to repower LA. This is just the start of Repower LA. And when we do that, we'll be an example, not just to this city, but to the entire world of what energy efficiency means. Congratulations.
Mr. Reyes.
From the standpoint of those who are doing their best to get by with what they have, every dollar counts, every penny counts at all of our households. So the fact that you created those opportunities is a tremendous change for many of the families. So from that point of view, I want to say thank you. Thank you, Councilman Weezer, for allowing this to happen through your leadership. But more importantly, the silos that you've broken, having IBW, Water and Power, and the community actually build these bridges to have a successful program. On top of that, have employees who are now getting trained, new skill sets, giving you a whole new horizon. In and of itself is tremendous. But just to break those silos between the private sector, the public sector, create something better is a model we need to continue essentially duplicating. So for that, I say thank you so much. Thank you for your patience. More importantly, for setting that example and being that role model. Thank you very much.
Mr. Englander.
I opened my DWP bill this morning and my electric bill portion for the last two months was $35. It was 35 bucks because I've been working with you guys and trying to figure out energy efficiency. And I've been bringing you out to my district to talk to groups and community groups and businesses on how they can save their bottom line. And having sat in those seminars and meetings that you guys have come out to work with us on and partner on, I finally said, well, wait a minute. Why am I not doing this at home? So I added solar. So I actually added a SPART irrigation system that's satellite-based. I changed all my light bulbs out. I did a lot of work on my own home from having sat there and preaching it and bringing you guys in to work with businesses and work with residents and our constituents to lower their bills, to be more business-friendly, to be more efficient and to be more environmentally friendly. And so I applaud you because I've seen it firsthand where you guys are actually on, the men and women of the DWP are working with our residents to improve their lives and improve our environment. And I'm a beneficiary of that as well, as so many others in my district are today. And we need to get more people to unplug. We need to get more people to get off the grid. We need to get more people to realize that we have all of these beautiful natural resources from wind and solar and biodiesel that we can take advantage of to clean the environment and to save our bottom line. So I thank you for your proactive measures and working hard and putting jobs on the front line, putting people back to work to create these benefits for our society. So thank you and God bless you. Thank you, Mr. Weezer, for bringing them forward.
Again, thank you, Mr. Weezer and DWP. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. President. And now we'll go back in the back chambers to take a photo. You're all welcome. I don't know if we all fit in that room, but we'll try. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer. Madam Clerk, I believe we have a quorum. If you could please call the roll.
Alacombus, Ciano, Cardenas, Englander, Garcetti, Weezer, Carrasco, Correa, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Zine, Wesson, 14 members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Carrick's moves, Englander seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Parks moves, Perry seconds.
Mr. President, today is Tuesday and now would be the time for the flag salute.
If everybody in the chambers could please rise, we're going to do our flag salute. We'll be led today by Mr. Parks.
Could have everyone stand. Place your right hand over your heart. Face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Parks. So that brings us where on the agenda, Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, do you wish to run through the agenda?
Yes, I do. So... So if we could go through the first set of items.
Items one through five are items noticed for public hearing. There is a request to continue items 4A through 4F until August 28th, and item 4G to August 31st.
Okay, without objection. Members' specials. Mr. Carras.
Item one through three, please, for Mr. Weezer.
Members, are there any cards?
Cards on items one, two, three, and four.
Okay, on the remaining item, I think we should prepare to vote on this. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, that brings us to our next set of items, I think six through 13.
Items six through 13 are items for which public hearings have been held. Mr. President, for items six and seven, the ballot tabulation results for item six were 89.28% of ballots cast in support and 10.72% of ballots cast in opposition. The ballot tabulation results for item seven were 95.43% of ballots were cast in support and 4.57% of ballots cast in opposition. For both items six and seven, the weighted value of the supporting ballots exceeds that of those in opposition, and a majority protest was not found to exist. Therefore, council may authorize the proposed establishment of both business improvement districts.
Okay. Members' specials. Okay, I see none. Let's prepare to vote on these items. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, if we could please keep it quiet in the council chambers. Our next order of biz, or items 14 through 32.
Items 14 through 32 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Without objection, those items are now before us. Do we have cards on these items?
Cards on items 14, 20, 21, 22, 25, and 32.
Members' specials. Mr. Labange, did you want? Okay. So, Mr. Garcetti.
23 and 24, please.
For Mr. Garcetti, items 23 and 24. Okay, let's open the roll. So let's, again, prepare to vote. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Yes, Mr. Labange.
728, please.
You see, Mr. Labange, the clerk was protecting your interests, and she asked me if we were going to do your items, but I just want you to know city staff cares about you. Okay, Mr. Corrigan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Fourth with numbers 15 through 19, please.
Without objection. That then brings us to items 33 through 41.
On the supplemental agenda, items 33 through 41 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, those items are now before us. Mr. Englander.
Three, please, special.
Okay, 33. For Mr. Englander. Members, any other? Mr.?
I'd like to continue 40 for one month, please.
And what day would that be, a one-month continuance, Madam Clerk?
August 31st.
Without objection. Mr. Carras.
38, special.
Mr. Buscayino.
35, please.
Do we have cards?
Cards on items 33, 37, 40, and 41.
Okay, well, we've continued 40. Okay, on the remaining items, let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, before we, so we've gone through the agenda, but before we get into general public comment, I'd like to take item 33 out of order. Mr. Englander, are you ready to take item 33?
Yes, I am.
All right, that item is before us.
I'd like to, if I could, call Mr. Steve Fazio to the desk, to the table here, please. Mr. President, council members, it's an honor and a privilege to, you can go ahead and have a seat. Feel comfortable. Make yourself at home. It's your new family. It's an honor and a privilege to bring forward a friend, somebody who I've known for many, many years, who's been a great leader in the San Fernando Valley, not only as a great father, but also as a businessman. He has been an LAPD Reserve Officer, now retired for many, many years, I believe, close to 30 years in LAPD, working some of the hardest parts of the city as a volunteer in the 7th and 7th Division and many others. And that deserves applause, yes, absolutely. This is a guy who has put his life on the front line to protect us for no pay, and he's willing to do it again. He's willing to step up to the Fire Commission, the Fire Commission that is one of the most important commissions because it's the most important function is public safety in the city of Los Angeles. And I can't think of anybody better, quite frankly, qualified, that's going to not only focus but bring the experience that he has, not only as a police officer but as a businessman, having run Fazio dry cleaners, which we're all familiar with for many, many years, and really getting that off the ground and becoming a household name. And it was a household name, you know, we've got dry cleaners on every corner, and they all pretty much do, although he'll probably correct me later and kill me for saying it, the same job. You bring your clothes in, you pick them up, they're clean. Why is he so successful? Because it's customer service, because he cares about his people, because he always thinks that customers are always right. And that's critically important in the commission. It's critically important with the police and the Fire Department and public service and everything the city of Los Angeles does because we're in the service business. And here's somebody who knows how, not only with his educational background and you've got his bio and his resume before you, it's very extensive, but is, his intelligence level and experience in crunching numbers and looking at the details, which is what we desperately need right now in the Fire Department, somebody who's willing to work through, go through all the reports and the hard work and ask the tough questions and become that, those eyes and ears for the citizens of Los Angeles. That's what we need at this point in time, and I can't think of anybody better, quite frankly, than Steve Fazio, and I think this is a great asset for us, and I ask all of you for your aye vote. If you would like to, before we open it up to any questions or members, if you want to share with the council, why do you want to do this, and what kind of experience do you think you bring to the table?
Thank you, Councilman Englander. It is a great pleasure and honor to be here today. Thank you, President Wesson, for having me before you today. It is with great enthusiasm that I sit before you today in an effort to gain support to allow me to continue my service to the great city of Los Angeles as a candidate for the Board of Fire Commissioners. I have seen the Los Angeles Fire Department respond to countless incidents through 30 years that I served with the Los Angeles Police Department as a line reserve in the streets. And throughout the time, I served in several jurisdictions, as Councilman Englander mentioned, from 77th, where I began, to South Bureau Crash, which covered all of, you know, South Bureau, San Pedro, Southeast Division, Southwest. Then I worked Northeast for a period of time, Central Newton for many, many years, Rampart, where I was on loan on a few occasions to help MacArthur Park, West Los Angeles, Van Nuys, and then finally Devonshire before I retired from the LAPD Reserve Corps last year. And I can tell you, as a member of the LAPD, I was always grateful as a first responder, knowing that I, when I reached for the microphone in the black and white, oftentimes feeling helpless as somebody perhaps was trapped in a car or there was a structure fire where I really wasn't equipped or knowledgeable or have the equipment to deal with the situation. It was always very comforting to know that somebody was going to show up as some citizen was enduring probably what was their biggest nightmare and the worst moment in their life, but I knew that, you know, not too, not, within a few minutes typically, you know, a paramedic or a fire engine would respond and take care of that victim and deal with it no matter what it took. Members of our Los Angeles Fire Department aren't just typically excellent in terms of the quality of their efforts, they're always, 100% of the time, always excellent. In my, in my point of view, our city has much to be proud of with our police department and our fire department and our paramedics. To cover 470 square miles with less than 1,000 firefighters and paramedics per shift and to do so while dealing with the budgetary limitations and challenges we currently face is something I greatly admire. When you compare our Fire Department with the resources we have against the cities in our country, the great cities, New York, Chicago, Boston, which I've been looking at, our Fire Department is truly second to none. In the last few days, I've had an opportunity to visit Air Operations at Van Nuys Airport. I've spoken with several members of the department at every level, and I'm always inspired and impressed with the professional can-do attitude that the members of our Los Angeles Fire Department always exhibit. They find a way to persevere and overcome every obstacle and every challenge, be it an upside-down vehicle with a person trapped inside or an out-of-control brush fire in the seemingly impenetrable terrain we have surrounding our city, or the waterways that they oversee and keep safe for our citizens in the waterways of property loss. They go about their business, the business of keeping us safe with the budgetary restrictions that I've heard many elected officials recently sum up as having been decimated in terms of their budget, but they continue to think outside the box with pride and professionalism. They're a stellar group of amazing professionals. If confirmed, I hope to find ways with the department leadership and the rank-and-file to be creative in our approach to reducing issues of response time. I'm very aware of that as being an issue currently, and if given the opportunity, I will commit to the council that I will be a very involved, committed commissioner. If confirmed, I will leverage what I've learned as a CEO over the last 34 years of running my organization, as well as what I've encountered with operating at all levels and members of the Los Angeles Police Department, working with field officers and management, as well as with past city councils dealing with police department issues. I will, you know, happily work with deployment and whatever are the issues that come about, you know, hopefully leveraging the problem-solving skills that I've learned as being in business. I will also bring to bear the business community. I've already been contacted by several friends in the business community, and once they found out that this was a possibility for me, asking me, how can they help out? And I think there's something to be gained from having somebody in business, you know, kind of at my level, talking with people also in business to help out with our Fire Department in a time of declining budgets in particular. I'll draw upon my background as a business school faculty member, where I taught strategy, as well as having been an advisor to many organizations in an effort to try and make the department as efficient and effective as I can be helpful with. The council, the mayor, and the men and women of the Los Angeles Fire Department and the commission count on me to continue to carry out my responsibilities as a commissioner to serve our taxpayers and the visitors of Los Angeles with what I hope will be the same levels of integrity and pride that our Fire Department demonstrates on every call. Mr. President, members of the City Council, I would be honored to receive your support for this position. You have my commitment to serving you and the city. You have my commitment that I will provide you with a complete transparency and access and will carry your message to your constituents' needs, whatever they may be, to the commission and the department. I welcome your comments.
Okay, Mr. Fazio, we won't hold it against you that you're a friend of Mr. Englanders. With that said, Mr. Zine.
Thank you. I received a text message from Fire Commissioner Scoban, and it said, be nice to you. I'm sure our commission president would also say the same, Jesus Hayes, thank you for being here. There's been some issues in the news about the Fire Department, some of the concerns, some of the issues. While we have many professional firefighters, they do a great job, and we know the fire season and the sacrifices they make. Some of the issues that came before this committee that I sit on public safety along with some of my colleagues, the response time issue, the issue of unprofessional within the fire station, how would you, as a commissioner, address those type of situations?
Well, I think there are some things that the Fire Department currently is looking at with the current task forces that it's underway, with Chief Butler kind of leading the effort internally and Commissioner Scoban currently helping out with his background from the Police Department, and they've got now RAND as well as USC involved, looking at ways in which they can address those issues. Some of it is actually computer-related errors. We found out at the Public Safety Committee meeting last week that Councilman Englander chairs that the second responding unit, the second responding unit, when they hit the button that says that they've arrived, kicks out the first responding unit. So we have to go back now and audit the records to determine what actually is the response time because that which we currently have is perhaps, perhaps the data turns out to be better than what we've been led to believe. So there's a lot of things that the department's currently doing in order to try and address the response time issue. I know in the West LA area, we're looking at paramedics to possibly be deployed with motorcycles. It might be something interesting to a person that served as a sergeant in the LAPD as a motor supervisor, but we're looking at that as well. To get through traffic on the west side is, you know, unbearable at times, given the closures of the 405 freeway in that area. So there are some things that the department's currently looking at in order to address those needs.
And I know that the department's going to start testing again. There were 318 positions that were being phased out through attrition, and that's going to be another process because there's thousands of people that want to be firefighters, especially in the city of Los Angeles. So that's going to be another challenge with those positions that are going to open up with the testing that's going to take place, it's been announced, they're going to have that. Mr. Labange, at one time, tried to be a Los Angeles firefighter, and he settled to be a city councilman, so you've got a great love for the fire service with Mr. Labange. And I know you, from your business experience, I know you on a personal level and your lovely girlfriend and your lovely, wonderful son who's here to show support for you. So I think it's a great mix for you, coming from the years of experience with Los Angeles Police Department into this position as a commissioner, that I know you'll do very, very well. And living in the San Fernando Valley, as you know, the heat, the fire season, but one thing I learned from some firefighters is make sure when you visit those stations, the first visit only, you got to bring them ice cream. After that, then you're invited, yes, but it's always the ice cream on the first visit. So I wish you well. I know you'll get unanimous support. Congratulations, Steve.
Mr. Zine, Mr. Zine, why, why, what happened with Mr. Labange in his quest to be a fireman?
Well, you know what? The Fire Department's very, very selective, very, very selective, and Mr. Labange reminded me the Police Department's not as selective, so that's what happened.
Mr. Labange.
In 1974, I took the test for firefighter Hollywood High on a Saturday. I failed the test. And I, when I first got here, I told Mr. Zine in confidence, being that he's a mature guy, and then he later used it in an argument that Labange failed the test for firefighter, and I was sitting over there, and I jumped up, and it just goes to show LAPD will take anybody, and that's then it's Zine right there. All that being said, there's nothing like public service, and there's nothing like firefighters, water, power, street maintenance. All of us have a job to do. You have a job to do as commissioner, your business background, the support you get from your family, your fellow commissioners, which is key. What we have to do is get more trucks back. We got to get more firefighters. We got to not cut from the tailboard, but find ways to economize, to make sure there's people. Because when there's an earthquake, they're not going to call the city council, they're going to call the Fire Department. We got to make sure we staff to the degree that we can and try to increase it. We're in a tough time right now. So I just pledge my support, and I know your great background, so we're going to do well. And I, I want to let that, for the record, Mr. President, know that Mr. Zine luckily made it to be the LAPD.
Thank you for that information, Mr. Labange. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you. Congratulations, Mr. Fazio, and congratulations on your amazing work, not only as a businessman but also in giving back to the city and being twice the citizen. Thank you, too, for the articulate way you laid out, I think, what is before the department. We've had an extraordinary board of commissioners who are overseeing a department, which has been through some choppy waters, as we know, and we've had a great leader, I think, Mitch Englander, I've been proud to kind of tag along as a secondor and to help him out on some of the stuff as we look at really drilling down into our statistics and trying to get good information. One of the things that I think we feel out there today is that we have incredibly committed people who are on the rank-and-file who, and at the top, we sometimes have not as clear information as we can. What plans do you have to help us develop a culture of training managers as they come up? I think LAPD is good. We have some extraordinary managers who are in the department right now who do an amazing job, but what can we do to help that be a more embedded part of the culture there, which is, I think, a great way, long-term, of making sure, whatever the issues are, liability issues and the things that we've all gone through together in the department and with the council on lawsuits, which I think has headed the right direction now, whether it's the response time statistics, but just looking at kind of some of the basic management training. And I know there's some good things going, but what ideas do you have in that area?
Thank you, Councilman Garcetti. I think it's a fabulous question, and it's a great opportunity, I think, we have here where we have Pepperdine University. where we have Pepperdine University, we have the University of Phoenix satellite offices all over the city, we've got UCLA, USC, and all the other university systems. I am friendly, as an alum of a couple of those universities. I've already reached out and asked if there's any possibility of working with them in some manner to do some onsite training with the fire department management, some leadership training. I taught strategy for three years at Pepperdine as an executive in residence, so it's an area that I'm passionate about. And I couldn't agree more that the more we can do to cross-pollinate that department management team with people, and there are several of our members of the fire department, a couple of whom I spoke with that are currently going through MBA programs, many of whom obviously have advanced degrees as well. But to offer opportunities for men and women on the fire department, I think, would be a huge benefit. And I also know that Commissioner Scoban has been reaching out to a couple of the local universities as well. So it is absolutely one of the top areas that I think we can do something with.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Englander.
Yeah, I just want to echo Mr. Labange, Mr. Zine, Mr. Garcetti's comments, as well as Mr. Reyes and those who spoke. The, one thing, Tom, is that you're right, our firefighters are heroes. You're absolutely right. And even they need heroes, they're called police officers. Don't forget that, Tom. No, I'm kidding. And I definitely want to echo what Mr. Garcetti spoke about with Fire Stat and what we're doing with the fire department. But, colleagues, I ask for your eye vote.
Okay, thank you. Anyway, I do want to acknowledge that we do have the President, Janitha Hayes of the Fire Commission, is here showing her support. With that said, members, let us open the roll. Oh, I forgot, public comment. Somebody, thank you, bad president, bad president.
It's not a change in council rules.
John Walsh and Mr. Herman. Michael, I didn't see a card on you, I'll check again. Now, wait a minute, Mr. Murphy, I don't have a card on you for item, this item. Sergeants, could you check to see if Mr. Murphy filled out a card for item 33? And I do not have Michael Carrion's card on item 33. Maybe it was misfiled. Mr. Walsh, we missed you last Friday. Anyway...
Well, I was on Jimmy Kimmel on Thursday, as you know, right from the city council, right from what I said here. So was Mr. Herman. HollywoodHighlands.org, come find out what the whole United States wants to see. John Walsh and Mr. Herman under public comment. It's a big joke. That's why Jimmy Kimmel put us on. HollywoodHighlands.org. As far as, Mr. Fazio, I just want you to, that's Fazio Cleaners, Woodland Hills, we got the commercial in, and I've got permission, which is if you mention Antonio Vierigosa's name, you will get a 15% discount. HollywoodHighlands.org, come to the website, see what we have. Bye.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Mr. Herman.
I'm just going to read this point. In one of the darkest economic times, particularly in a community like this one, Los Angeles, we say, "Welcome you, Commissioner, and your new appointee, but keep the ethics and the conditions of what our council members are supposed to represent, not them, but the public." Thank you. Hold my time.
Okay, Michael Carrion, and again, I haven't found your card or yours, Mr. Murphy. Michael.
Okay, welcome to the commission. I have a few questions. I'd like to know what it is you're going to do about the property owners who failed to clean their weed abatement, especially the city of Los Angeles. In Mr. Reyes's district, we have weeds that are six feet tall, adjacent to a building. That is a fire hazard. I wonder what you're going to do about it? How are you going to handle this problem when the city of Los Angeles, especially Mr. Reyes's office, refuses to clean their property? We have them in several districts. Mr. Buscaino sits on a board, where the weeds are growing, the buildings, walls falling down, they refuse to do anything. I'd like for you to just rebuttal on that. How are you going to address the city of Los Angeles not cleaning up their property, which becomes a fire hazard? One spark, Mr. Reyes's district goes up, he's no longer in office, and he's gone. We are still here, we are still dealing with the issue of weed abatement. We're suing banks, and we're telling the banks that the bottom line is that the bank is the property owner. Well, the city is the owner of these vacant lots. This is in North Hollywood, I think it was, it was started by a fire, was started by wires that went down. We have several wires, several palm trees, weeds that are six feet tall, and Mr. Reyes, and I've asked him several months to clean it. Now it's a personal thing where he won't. So I'd like to know what the commissioner-elect is going to do about getting the city to clean up after itself before it goes after other people? Because I sit here and see this as hypocrisy. You go and you sue other people, but yet you don't clean your own property. If you're going to be a commissioner, we have to get all these properties cleaned equally.
Okay, Michael, I'm going to ask the sergeants to give you another card to fill out, and the same with Mr. Murphy. Mr. Reyes, and Mr. Murphy, you can make your way up here. Mr. Reyes.
Council President, unfortunately, I feel compelled not to bring pictures for everything I do in my district, just to prove how misleading and misinformed this gentleman is. And it's unfortunate that the commissioner has to endure that type of falsehood. But I do have pictures. I stand up, Commissioner, out of respect to you, it's unfortunate we get misleading, misinformation from folks who essentially don't speak with the facts. But again, I look forward to working with you, sir. And I will show you the pictures, that's one less part we have to worry about. Thank you, sir.
Okay, can we fix our clock? Madam Clerk? Okay, now, Mr. Murphy.
I asked the commissioner to please keep the fire stations open, no layoffs, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Okay, now, let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Congratulations, Commissioner Fazio.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Madam Clerk, it's my understanding that we have two items that we need to vote to reconsider. I think there's some cleanup language or something like that.
Yes, items five and 36.
Okay, so right now, we're going to vote on reconsideration of both of those items. So let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, let's take up item five first, and what is it that we have to do with item five that we didn't do before?
For item five, council should close the public hearing. The public announcement of the tabulation of ballots will be on Tuesday, August 7.
Okay, so we're voting to close the public hearing.
Or without objection, council can close the public hearing.
Okay, so without objection, those hearings are closed. Let's, again, Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, now, let's go to the other item. What was that, 36, was it?
Yes, for item 36, as a technical correction, recommendation number six should read, "Find that the proposed improvements and activities are completely separate from the day-to-day operations of the city of Los Angeles."
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's prepare to vote on that item as well. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes. And there's a request for that item to go forthwith.
Forthwith.
And also, forthwith, there's requests for forthwith for items six and seven.
Without objection. Okay, at this point, I think we want to, I know we want to get to items one, two, and three, but I do want to go through the public comment portion of today's proceeding. So I'll start off with John, I think it's John Bernie, Betsy Hunter, general public comment. Betsy Hunter, Bernard Clinch, okay, please come forward.
Good morning, my name is Betsy Hunter, and I'm a resident of Park La Brea. On the morning of July 11, my friend of over 30 years, Marnie Rosenberg, was killed at the intersection of Sixth Street and Hauser. When there was an accident in the corner, a car jumped the curb and hit her, dragging her at least 20 feet before stopping against a building. It was the day before her 75th birthday. We heard it from our apartment, we saw the crash scene, but didn't realize it was our friend until the police came to our door later that afternoon, several hours later. According to one witness, a nurse who was on the scene immediately at 9:45 a.m., when there were many calls in about this accident, no ambulance or police had arrived when the nurse left at 10 a.m. From our apartment, we have a view down on the corner of Sixth and Hauser, which is about a block away. We regularly hear the screeching of brakes, the crunching of metal and trees and buildings. It's unnerving to us, I can't imagine how it affects all the families that live at that corner. When Marnie came to visit with us, to stay with us, she and I made morbid jokes about standing 20 feet back from that particular corner until the light changed to get a running start in case a car came at us. The number of accidents is increasing, the majority of them are in the daytime, not at night, or during the restricted left-turn hours of four to seven in the afternoon. Since that accident three weeks ago, there have been two more accidents at that corner, just that I know about. I've been in touch with Councilman Labange's office, and I'm gratified by their response so far, but my goal is for the city to do whatever it takes to make that corner safer for pedestrians as well as drivers. Now, the President of our Park La Brea Residents Association has some comments.
Morning, council members. It's July 11, 2012, it's near the Miracle Mile, at the corner of Sixth and Hauser.
Could you introduce yourself, by name, please?
Bernard Clinch, I'm the President of the Park La Brea Residents Association. Margaret Rosenberg was waiting to cross the street, then an accident, a car careened off another car, jumped the curb, slapping into an apartment, and pinning Margaret underneath it. She lay under the car for nearly 20 minutes. When paramedics finally arrived, they free her from beneath the car and took her to Cedar Sinai Hospital, where she later died. She would have turned 75 the next day. There are no words that can convey the scope of this tragedy. Unfortunately, it was a tragedy waiting to happen. Sixth and Hauser is a very dangerous intersection. There have been two more accidents since this one, and at least one prior, that also jumped the curb, landing on the porch of that same apartment. That apartment and the entire north side of Sixth Street and Hauser are occupied by Park La Brea apartments. Park La Brea is one of the largest rental communities in the country. It sits on 160 acres, consists of 4,200 apartments, and well over 10,000 residents. I'm a 30-year resident of Park La Brea. I also reside on the same block as the accident. More importantly, I'm the President of the Residents Association. Most of us on this block are frequent users of this intersection. My three sons use it several times a week. I, myself, have seen near collisions many times. Something more important to note is there are several families living on this block, block 30. I recently took a poll and discovered that there are 21 children under the age of 10 on this block. Let's do something about Sixth and Hauser before the next victims are a mother and her child.
Good morning, council members. My name is John Bernie, I am the Director of Resident Services at Park La Brea. I have been with Park La Brea for 23 years, 18 years in the leasing office, five years with administration. In 2006, I was elected and served on the Mid-City West Community Council, and in 1981, when I arrived here from Boston, I spent my first night at the Beverly Laurel Hotel. I am very dedicated to this neighborhood. This is the incident that brings me to city council for the first time. It's a woman I never met, Margaret Rosenberg, who stood on our property as a pedestrian and was hit and killed in a car accident. As part of my two minutes of public comment, I now give part of my time to Margaret and offer a moment of silence. We work very hard to create destinations in our neighborhood, The Grove, The Tar Pits, The Miracle Mile revitalized a million-dollar rock, all destinations Park La Brea residents can walk to. I'm often asked by prospective residents, is this a safe area? And up until this incident, I always thought that was a question about crime, but I've changed my opinion. It's actually a question about pedestrian traffic. And right now, the answer to that question is no, it's not safe. We should all focus on what we can do. We can recognize that there is currently something wrong about traveling the Sixth Street corridor. On behalf of my neighbors and my friends, please, council, focus on this. I personally must say that the answer to the question, "Are we safe?", is yes. We're happy to sit and offer our observations another time. Today, we honor Margaret Rosenberg.
Thank you very much, John, I appreciate your comments. That also with Bernard and Betsy. And members, I am working with the community on this and the Department of Transportation. My deputy's going to be over the ropes right now in a moment. Thank you for your public comment. Thank you. Mr. Cardenas, for an introduction.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. In the back, we have standing, wave your hands, kids, we have some kids from L.A.'s best in the Van Nuys community from Carriage School. Welcome to your city council chambers.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you. If I may ask, we do also have one other guest who is with us today, a mayor who is visiting us from the central part of Korea, Mayor Jung, Sanghyuk Jung, who is the mayor of Byung Jun, which is, Byung Gunn, excuse me, which is the central part of Korea. He's here. His town literally means gratitude or Thanksgiving, and it represents actually an entire almost state within. He's had a very distinguished career, and here with the agreement of free trade between South Korea and the United States, looking for opportunities to help bring investment to his area, as well as to look for opportunities to invest here. So we want to introduce Mayor Jung, and welcome him very much here. If we can give him a round of applause.
Han hyo seo, chingu. Han hyo seo. Very good. Now, I'd like to call for public comment at this time. Sean Murphy, Adrian Gross, Michael Calderon.
Good morning, Mr. President. I'd like to remind the council and everybody in L.A., there's a big event going on this Sunday with the Archdiocese of Los Angeles and the Knights of Columbus. As you know, we've been playing this for months, it's the Guanlupe Celebration. I hope to see everybody there. Also, we need to keep our parks and libraries open and the fire stations open. That's it.
Yes. Thousands jobless, dozens of mentally ill patients having psychotic episodes, hundreds of terminally ill patients without the medicine they need to live. This is what the headlines will read in about a month, due to this council's refusal to take the steps necessary to come to a sensible compromise about safe, affordable access to medical marijuana. How any one of these council members can sleep at night knowing that they are responsible for these atrocities is truly beyond me. I have spoken to thousands of people who will be without their sole source of income to feed their families, to send them to school because of this vote. I have spoken to dozens of people whose previously untreatable mental illnesses can only be treated with medical marijuana. I have also spoken to dozens of terminally ill, some paralyzed, who can barely walk and speak, and who, with medical marijuana, can lead completely slightly happier lives until the time where they die. And speaking of dying, as a result of this, many of them will die because they are in such fragile health that the medical marijuana they need to make them eat, if they don't have it, that will result in a downward spiral that will result in their death. And by the way, none of these people have the capacity to cultivate medical marijuana, just as no lay citizen has the ability to synthesize pharmaceutical drugs. But despite all of this, a voter's initiative is being drafted as we speak, and the will of the people shall prevail.
Thank you. Michael Calderon.
Yes, Mr. Reyes stood up and basically called me a liar. So we got news reporters... So we got news reporters here. I challenged Mr. Reyes to meet me out at that site right after this meeting and see what it looks like. And then we'll see who the liar is. And I don't think Mr. Reyes has the guts to go out there and see what it is. Mr. Reyes made a statement a couple of weeks ago that that yard wasn't cleaned because there were syringes in it. Okay, Mr. Reyes? So it's okay for a child to step in that and get infected with HIV? Because you don't want to do it because your ego and pride is in the way. Because I've sat here and confronted him. I am talking about it. So sit down, Mr. Ellinger, whatever your name is. So we got to understand one thing, that we are talking about children's lives here. We are talking about HIV and Hep C and other infectious diseases that have to be corrected. Mr. Reyes is the one that said this. So I am trying to get this city council to understand that. We need it cleaned. I'm not asking you here to comb your hair, to grow your hair, Mr. Reyes. I'm asking you to clean this property. The property needs to be cleaned. He is the one that stated that there were syringes there, not me. He is the one that said it wasn't clean because there were syringes there. Well, you know what? I got kids walking through there every day. The sidewalk is infested. But yet, it's in CD1, and I demand that it gets cleaned. It's already been on the agenda for weeks and months, and nothing's been done about it. He knows about it because he made a comment here in public comment. He responded that there were syringes there. Well, if there are syringes there, let's get it cleaned. This must be a hazard. We need hazardous waste out there. We need something done about it. I sat here and said he can come and speak to me, but he hasn't come and spoke to me. Instead, he sits there and responds. Okay? I'm within my guidelines. I know exactly what they are. So all I ask is that he does his job for once.
All right, thank you. Mr. Reyes?
Again, I apologize, colleagues, for this type of dialogue from this gentleman who is misinformed. I have pictures. The lot's been cleaned. The last lot has been taken care of. I truly believe that a person should be treated with respect. It's unfortunate that he has the, this mentality that by yelling and screaming at people, he expects people to respond to him even though they're being yelled at, whether it's by my staff, his disrespect here in the council floor, and the time he takes away from dealing with real issues. The lot's been cleaned. The last lot was addressed by workers who were properly dressed with the right equipment so that they will not get hurt as they cleaned the lot.
Thank you very much for that information, Mr. Reyes. John Walsh, followed by Rick Morris and Daniel Jones. Mr. Walsh, still here?
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. I had to do this when Mr. Parks didn't show up for several weeks. Mr. Rosendahl is not showing up. I care enough about him to ask you, is he ill? You act as if nothing's happening. Where is Bill Rosendahl? Okay? Now, I would like to point out that if you want to see our performance here last Tuesday on ABC Television, just Google Kimmel Walsh and KICK, K-I-C-K, and you'll see what we had, what we did. Now, Judge Jones, the other day, took your EIR for a twenty-story tower on Hollywood Boulevard, tore it up, and excoriated the Department of Planning. The story in the L.A. Times was a BJ. I hope you know what a BJ is, for the mayor Garcetti, for the man who thinks he's going to be mayor. Now, I want to speak now to everybody in the developer community who wants entitlements and wants to, and therefore gives money to Garcetti. He didn't come through for you. They spent a million dollars on those entitlements, and Mr. Doug Haynes, our hero, spent over fifty thousand dollars on his lawsuit. And because of Doug Haynes, our hero, and his lawsuits, we're not going to have that twenty-story tower, and it makes Garcetti look like a fool. He's not sitting down there. He's on the phone trying to raise money. That's what this is all about. It's about raising money. And I'd like to finish by saying the motorcycles in L.A., you are not enforcing the law, the LAPD, on the muffler. It is getting out of control. And every time you hear a muffler, and I know what, don't vote for Zine. He is the man who's stopping enforcement of muffler laws on trucks.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Okay, okay. Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Daniel Jones, come on. Daniel Jones, Rick Morris, Yvonne Michelle Autry. Mr. Jones? Oh, okay, it's Mr. Morris? No, you're there. Go ahead. Just identify yourself.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'm the state member of the city council member.
Speaking to Mike.
My name is Daniel Jones, and for the last twenty-four years, myself and six other individuals in this country were responsible for the personal safety of every person in the Pacific region of the United States when I installed a computer network for the United States Customs Service in every port ministry in the Pacific region of the United States. I had to break the non-disclosure release form just to say that. The last twenty-six years, the Los Angeles, well, every peace officer in Southern California was forced to sign and falsify and commit perjury by falsifying car accident reports. By them putting their name and their badge numbers on these reports and saying it back to the Department of Justice, they had been forced to do so. It was not their idea. They did not participate in it. And if they wanted to keep their jobs, they had to stay online and keep their mouth shut. I witnessed it myself as a AAA tow truck driver for five years, and that's why I don't drive it anymore. The fact that these officers put their lives on the line and came to duty and protect ourselves from ourselves is not to be blamed for anything they have done. If there's going to be a grand jury investigation, it's for the five Orange County Board of Supervisors that committed this crime back in nineteen ninety, and I have all the proof and validation you could ever want to see. It is my duty to report this to the people of the city of Los Angeles and to the state of California. These officers are not to be persecuted. It was not their idea, and they have to do it every day. The insurance fraud in this country needs to stop, and it needs to stop today. These officers are here to protect us from ourselves. Now that the Department of Justice cannot longer use that threat of perjury against them, sir, you now have the Los Angeles Police Department, the Sheriff's Department, and every single peace officer in the state of California backing your control. Do not let the Department of Homeland Security take it away, your Los Angeles City Police Department. Good day.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Okay. Are you Mr. Morris?
Yes, I am.
Okay, if I could get Yvonne Michelle Autry, and followed by Mr. Herman.
Hi. Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Rick Morris. I live in downtown Los Angeles, and I want to strongly lend my support to the streetcar program. This is for number one. I've lived here for six years, and I love--
You know, this is the general public comment portion. That's item one.
Can I speak? I'd like to speak on number one. I am going to have to leave right now to go to work.
Well, no, if I did that for you, I'd have like eight million people wanting me to do that. So I will note that you support the project, and we want to thank you very much for coming down.
Thank you.
But you have to, if it's on the agenda, you're supposed to speak exactly on that--
I'm sorry, I have to go to work. So I can't stay.
I understand that, Mr. Morris.
All right, but I strongly give support--
I'm glad you are working. Ms. Autry, followed by Mr. Herman, followed by David Popolik.
Yes, thank you. I am Yvonne Michelle Autry. You know, it's such a travesty of justice when a supposed democratic or egalitarian system continues to rob its constituents. And for the record, I'd like to continue to encourage the council, just as an act in good faith, to return the land, that being the South Farm, to the people, reminding you that in doing this, you're encouraging the constituents to continue to generate a very positive cash flow, as they were able to grow and cultivate their own foods. They were able to then have their own farmers' markets, discouraging much of the constituency because the youth were then involved in cultivating life and encouraging life instead of taking it while involved in gang-related activities. Also, native people, Mexican, indigenous, black people, people of all races were coming together to this end. The city took the land, and to date, it has not been developed. That's disgusting, and it's horrific. Can you even posture, make a posture as if this is still a democratic republic, not serving just the wealthy, the rich, or the real estate developers who are financing this regentification process? That's it, number one. Secondly, I'd like to bring to the attention of a constituency who might be suffering because of illegal covert paramilitary or military experiments that are being performed on unwitting constituency, many of which who are just medicated and then operated on. Tuskegee not being the only experiment that was perpetrated, that primarily on African-Americans, those that are suffering sacral lumbar thoracic and/or cervical pain, might be suffering not only because of the microwaves, but because of laser, microwave, and other beams that are being used just to test the responses of the constituency. Do your research. This is a part of CIA or covert illegal military and paramilitary experiments. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Herman?
Citizens of Los Angeles, without a doubt, Gwen Dostopny said, "Settle down, Los Angeles. Settle down." At a time of seven hundred and sixty-two registered dispensaries legalized by voters, by local government, by the state, you're throwing the state under the bus when you do not put and enforce regulations in five years. Just five years. You had a whole slew of time. Instead, you created the turmoil, Mr. Weezer. And yet, on this committee of council members, we have three officers who could not determine that this legalization would create problems down the road. Shame on all of you. You're representatives of the people. We are the people. And the State Appellate Courts ruled that municipalities cannot be completed by a ban without state or court's decisions. And that's where we're going with this. Off topic now. Mr. Weezer, Sota Corridor, it's a danger to the public. Mr. Busciano, come on. Safety of the public's endangered on Sota Corridor. We have a barrier there. Mr. Reyes, we have weeds in our area as well, bordering yours on Valley. All this redistricting has created problems, problems upon problems. So let's get on the ball and fix these problems. These are city issues. Public safety is at risk. And so, Mr. Reyes, as you said on one of your constituents, Mr. Currión, it's not that he's offending you, it's that he's reprimanding you for the actions of what you did not do to make the matter safe for children and to make it safe for the public with needles and disease in that area.
Thank you, Mr. Herman. Thank you. David, Mr. Alacón.
I just wanted to point out to Mr. Herman that I thought we dealt with the weed problem last week. Thank you very much.
Okay, David. David?
My name is David Popolik. I'm a dispensary owner in Los Angeles--
Speaking to the mic, David.
I'm a dispensary owner in Los Angeles. I'm here because I seen the meeting last week on the twenty-fourth about the dispensaries. It's been a long time since we've had this problem, and we haven't been able to come up with an effective way of running it. I have a few good suggestions, I would think, and a little discouraged because I wasn't able to say anything about this last week. It seems that there's about twelve hundred dispensaries right now in Los Angeles County. I figured if you put about four hundred and thirty of them in, seeing as there's about four hundred and thirty square miles in Los Angeles County, we wouldn't have any problem of having it policed by others because the person that owned that square mile would keep anybody else from being there. Plus, if you charged those dispensaries one hundred dollars per month to run that, you would come up with a forty, or four, forty-three thousand dollar budget to run that. I think there are really good suggestions and ways to do this. I'd hate to see my dispensary shut down. And I am one of the legal ones, by the way. I'm not freed two thousand and seven, but it really upsets me. I run my stuff right, and yet I'm going to be shut down. I didn't find out about this until I'm going to get a letter in the mail. I didn't warn anybody else that has dispensaries. I never got anything. Due to the fact I am one of the legal ones, I figured maybe somebody would send me a letter, tell me something's going wrong or that I'm going to be closed for no reason that I knew of. I don't know who's actually in charge of this. I just found this out when I seen this on, at nine o'clock on the other night. I believe Mr. Huzaar, I don't know how to say your name, I'm sorry, Weezer, think you had something to do with this. I think there are very good ways of having this settled and easy ways to go about this. And if you could put it in office, actually in charge of it, I'd be glad to do it myself. I would hope that you guys could find a real good way to do this. I don't want to shut this down. And not only that, I've been a medical patient for over twenty years. I needed it just to walk. So I hope you guys would find a better way. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, that closes our general public comment portion of today's council meeting. Mr. Weezer, I think if you're ready, we'll take up your items. In fact, before we do that, Mr. Labange, we have a cub. We have a cub in our midst.
We have a great cub from Loyola High School who's going to stand up right now. Tom Vosler right here, give him a big hand. He's doing a summer project for Loyola. He's with his mom. Good job. And our president is a proud parent of a cub, so, which is good. I'm a proud parent of a soon-to-be cub, so.
All righty. Welcome, young man. Okay, Mr. Weezer, we're going to take up your items next. What we're going to do is, it's my understanding, have fifteen minutes for those who support the project, fifteen minutes for those who oppose the project, and there'll be one minute per speaker.
That's fine, Mr. President. Yes.
Okay, now, Madam Clerk, it's my understanding, prior to the start of this item, that you have to read something into the record.
Mr. President, if I may, and I just want to make sure that we have all the items up before us. They are items one, two, three, and twenty-two.
Can we make sure, Madam Clerk, that, okay? With that said, Madam Clerk, if you could do what it is that you must do.
This is the time and place for the public hearings in this city council's proceedings for the City of Los Angeles Community Facilities District Number Nine Downtown Streetcar. The hearings are to inquire into the formation of the district, the levy of special taxes in the district, and the need to incur bonded indebtedness in the district. The hearings are now officially opened. It's recommended that council first have presentations by staff about the district, followed by comments and questions and any protests from interested, from any interested persons. Thereafter, council may receive and consider any motions regarding proposed modifications to the proposed resolutions and ordinances.
Okay, Mr. Weezer, did you want to open?
Sure, thank you. Colleagues, I'll speak briefly, and then we'll open it up for public comment. But what's before us is an opportunity for the city to allow the voters to decide whether there should be an assessment to raise funds for the downtown streetcar project. It's called a Community Facilities District, and we're using a mechanism as the Miller Rules Act to make this possible. As many of you know, the downtown stakeholders have been working to create a streetcar for downtown, not only as a better transportation system in addition to some of the transportation options for downtown, but also as an economic development driver for some of the revitalization that is occurring in downtown. When I was elected about six years ago, there was discussion about the streetcar and different facets of downtown. Through our Bringing Back Broadway Initiative, we brought that discussion to the Bringing Back Broadway platform, and we've moved forward by creating a street, a nonprofit called the Street, L.A. Streetcar, Inc., that has moved this project even further. The way we're moving forward is similar to what other cities have done, such as Portland, where a nonprofit leads the effort to make this possible. Now, this is granted. We will then move forward and allow the voters of the assessed district to vote whether the property in their area should be assessed or not, to provide about sixty-five million dollars for the streetcar. If passed, the city will then move forward and apply for some federal funding to fill in that gap that's needed. We anticipate that this project will provide, will cost about a hundred to twenty, two-hundred and twenty-five million dollars to make possible. Now, we think that should we move forward with this, it would allow the people in the area to decide. I know there are some issues as to whether the property owners should decide or the voters should decide. I'll take up those issues once we hear from the public about some of those concerns. But I think overall, there's overwhelming support for us to move forward. So I ask that you listen to the-- that you listen to the public, we discuss this, and vote on it, and allow the streetcar to once again roam the streets of downtown Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer. Okay, I want to start out with Lori Sale, Samuel Sale, and Nguyen. If I could see all three of you, please come forward.
Hi, I'm Lori Sale, and I'm a third-generation property owner in downtown Los Angeles on Los Angeles Street. I'm very much against this for a couple of reasons. One is that it's creating an assessment district beyond where the direct line of the streetcar will run. You're asking property owners, large and small, to choose whether to pay a desired bid assessment or a forced streetcar tax. Many have said they won't be able to pay both, and thus our fashion district bid is in jeopardy. This could be a terrible black eye for the city, and especially for the stakeholders in this area. The bid renewal and election will happen at the same time at the end of this year. It's a disaster waiting to happen. Thirty years is a long time. Many of us won't be around, and surely many of the consultants who put this together would be in rest homes and not remember the damage that they have caused to our people. They don't live in the declining, with the declining rents and vacancies along Los Angeles Street. We've reduced rents and can't even pass our bid assessments onto our tenants, yet alone...
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Samuel Sale, followed by Ann Nguyen, followed by Paul Rutter.
Hello. My name is Sam Sale. I and other members of my family own property on Los Angeles Street between 8th and 9th. This property has been in our family since the 1930s, when my late father-in-law purchased them. Our family helped form the Fashion District Business Improvement District, and we are concerned about its survival due to the additional assessments that will be made if the streetcar proposal is instituted as it is now proposed. This burden of paying for 30 years to support the supposed bond issue will be a heavy burden on small and mid-sized property owners, and we are barely surviving in today's economy. It will result in an assessment of $180,000 encumbrance just for our 2,400 square properties.
Thank you, Mr. Sale. Ann Nguyen, Paul Rutter, followed by Brady Westwater. It's one minute per person. It's one minute. You can ask this sergeant, or we can direct a staff to go over and accommodate you. Ann Nguyen, Paul Rutter, Brady Westwater, I believe it is. I want to see Mr. Westwater. Yes, Ann.
Good morning, Ann Nguyen, with both the Downtown Center Business Improvement District and the Central City Association. First of all, I want to applaud the efforts of Councilmember Weezer and his staff, the streetcar board, and all the stakeholders who have been involved in this project from the inception. It's been a long road to get to this point. Earlier this year, the downtown bid voted to support the project after a very long and robust debate. That bid support, though, was predicated upon an assurance that a public entity would fund all the operational costs of the project, and no further assessment would be levied on the property owners down the line. We believe the current language in the RMA documents do not sufficiently guarantee this, and we urge Councilmember Weezer to consider the alternate language that is before him. It gets us that assurance that property owners need to get behind this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Rutter, followed by Brady Westwater, followed by Arianna Neustorf. Yes, sir.
Good morning, councilmembers. I'm Paul Rutter. I'm co-COO of Thomas Properties Group. We own 2.5 million feet of property in downtown at the City National Plaza. We are affected by the proposed streetcar CFD. However, we're not being given a vote on the CFD or the assessment rate. And apart from the support of the streetcar itself, we're very concerned about the methodology by which the CFD would be proposed, and the fact that the registered voters in the district would vote it, but we as a property owner would not be able to vote it. We have a large property and would be subject to a 30-year assessment without having a vote on this matter. We also have financial concerns about the streetcar program. Our property is several blocks from the streetcar route. We run our own private shuttle service, and none of this will benefit our tenants or visitors. Finally, as I think the local headline said in one of the newspapers, those who pay should have a say, and that's why we're very concerned. Thank you.
Thank you. Brady Westwater, Arianna Neustorf, and John Walsh.
My name is Brady Westwater, but I mark down general comments. I'm speaking about its impact on the overall city, which I feel is a positive, so I don't know if I'm in the proper category. I do not mark down...
No, you just go right ahead.
Okay. My name is Brady Westwater. I'm a resident and work in downtown Los Angeles. There are three reasons I feel that this project will benefit the City of Los Angeles, citizens throughout it. First, by making downtown Los Angeles more friendly to transit, making it easier to get around. It's going to encourage more people to move downtown who currently work there, taking cars off freeways and streets throughout the city. Second, by making it an easier-to-navigate area, it will have people who live here 24 hours a day, work and live, be able to use the streetcar and other transit, helping subsidize rush-hour transit throughout the rest of Los Angeles. Lastly, jobs. Tourism is one of our few growing industries by having a streetcar that goes to the convention center to the rest of downtown.
Thank you, Mr. Westwater. Arianna Neustorf, John Walsh, followed by Mr. Herman.
Hi, I'm a resident of downtown, and I actually am a property owner as well. I also work downtown, and I'm very much in support of the streetcar. I think that it'll add a lot of business to downtown, and I think that if we can keep it running later at night, maybe till 3:00 a.m., it'll really stimulate some of the nightlife in downtown and make it an even more fun and wonderful place to live. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. And before you start, John, before you start, Mr. Labange, if you, we have a bunch of special visitors in the back. If you could go find out who they are so we can recognize them and their parents can see them on television tonight. Okay, with that said, Mr. Walsh, the floor is yours.
Blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Another tax on top of Prop R+, which you will be voting on in November, which is a 30-year tax, a half-cent sales tax, on top of the Prop R. you voted on four years ago, which is a half-cent sales tax. Tax, tax, tax. What, for streetcar? A desire for streetcar? The only reason a streetcar is on the menu is the ego of Weezer. They want to name something after themselves. I'd like to point out that in the last five years, you've cut 1 million service hours out of the bus, so we can have a little Tunaville trolley that goes back and forth, back and forth. This is a vanity project. We must vote no on this street tax. We shouldn't, they shouldn't even be allowed to. But this is your Waterloo, Mr. Weezer, because no one wants your damn streetcar. It's a traffic snarl. HollywoodHighlands.org. Tax, tax, tax. You don't even live in the area, Mr. Weezer. You don't even live downtown. You stole it from Miss Perry.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Walsh. Deborah Schwartz, or Mr. Herman, did I call you already? Deborah Schwartz, Michael Kerion. Please come forward. Are you Ms. Schwartz? And then, Michael, you're after her.
Here's another exceptional plan. Raise taxes in a way that is so hidden and so obvious. At the end of all this, who pays for it? You, you, and all of you, the taxpayers. Why? As mentioned in many points, because this is what the legacy of a Jose Weezer is in his order of redistricting the Broadway corridor. What about Caesar E. Chavez Avenue? What about Huntington Drive, areas within your community? Why don't you take care of them first? But again, a trolley for 100 and what, 25 million? And then we're going to get the federal government to pick up a percentage of it? No. No, no, no. Pull money out of your pocket and invest with the investors, but don't take it out of the state or the federal government for a process that you believe is going to work in interest of the public. Transportation was meant for the public. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Schwartz, before you speak, Mr. Labange for an introduction.
From Mr. Carter's District, Kittrich Elementary School. Step up right there, big wave to the camera. Give them a big hand. Good luck to all of you. Thank you. Good job.
Okay, you've stepped up enough. You...
Just saying a quick hello. One, two, three, hello.
And hello back to all of you. Okay, now, if you would follow Mr. Labange. Okay, guys, follow Mr. Labange. Follow. Okay, you have to go back to the back of chambers. Wait a moment, Ms. Schwartz, because we want to hear you, but it's important to acknowledge children when they're here. If we could keep it down, Ms. Schwartz, followed by Michael Kerion. Yes.
They're a tough act to follow. My family's been involved in the Fashion District for over 60 years. I'm a third-generation property owner. We're all for the streetcar. I don't think anyone in here, in terms of property owners and such, are against the idea. The issue here is who's paying for it? And under the current proposal, we would be paying, our kids would be paying, our grandkids would be paying for the next 30 years without any representation. We would have no vote. It's taxation without representation, which just is no good. My suggestion is, and I think some other of the property owners is, let's look at this proposal. Let's just slow this process down so that we find a more equitable way to pay for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Kerion.
Hello, I'm against this choo-choo train for a few reasons. Mr. Weezer can't get a wall done that's been there for eight years that Mr. Busciano's department keeps hitting on, and they allow the property owner to dictate when they're going to have meetings. How are you going to deal with choo-choo train in your district if you can't settle a lawsuit? I'm embarrassed to be part of this district. You know, I want the wall done. Legally, you've already been challenged, you lost. Now, you're going to be challenged again. These people that own large buildings are going to have to pay the blunt of the price, and the people who own the small properties are going to pay a small portion of it to get a choo-choo train. Okay? Nobody wants it. Learn how to manage the whole CD14, not just Bring Back Broadway. Okay? Mr. Reyes, I'm up. Yes, a man! I'm tired of this.
Thank you, Michael, thank you. Okay, now, if we could restart the clock for those in support. Martha Salcedo, I think this is Patty Berman, and Shiraz Tangiri. Good to see you.
Good morning. Over the course of many years, individuals, community organizations, and businesses have come together with the common goal of revitalizing downtown Los Angeles. The results have been the transformation of a 9-to-5 business center into a community where people live, work, and play. We believe the streetcar is another important contribution towards a revitalized city center and support the project. As the property owner with the largest assessment valued at over $450,000 a year, this is a substantial commitment for our company, but we believe that this is an important investment in the future of downtown Los Angeles and urge you to approve the matter before you. Thank you.
Thank you. Patty Berman, followed by Shiraz Tangiri, followed by Jeff Battenshure. Yes.
Good morning. My name's Patty Berman. I am the president of the Downtown Los Angeles Neighborhood Council, and today I'm also here as the assistant to the executive director of the Historic Downtown Business Improvement District. Both of these organizations are very much in favor of the streetcar. We have both passed many motions in favor all along through this process, and we continue to support it. The economic development that it will bring in is something that we can't even dream about. It's important to this area. It will help with the revitalization of an area that was once completely blighted and will bring a lot of new residents and new businesses into the area. Historically, through national and international trials with these streetcars, it has been proven that they bring in more than they cost. Let's stop worrying about how we're going to do this. Get it done. It's important for downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Tangiri and Jeff Battenshure, followed by Scott Denham.
Good morning, councilmembers. Shiraz Tangiri of Alston Bird. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, L.A. Streetcar, Inc., and will make myself available for questions. I did want to hit a couple of points. First off, I think one of the reasons this project is so exciting, we've had such widespread support, is it's not just about the future of L.A., but it's really also about the past. I can't tell you the number of people that come up and have talked to streetcar folks about remembering when they rode the streetcar as a kid, from downtown, out to the Valley, down to San Pedro, all through the town. That's really what this project is about, is restarting a movement that recaptures a moment when L.A. was thriving and connected, and we're going to start that in downtown. We've had a tremendous amount of property owner support and input throughout the project. We've submitted for the record a five-page summary of all the public outreach efforts that have gone out over the last several years. Public meetings, meetings with each of the Business Improvement Districts, meetings with any property owner that wants to sit down and give us their ideas, and we've improved this project substantially in that time. We are unfortunately constrained by state law as to how the voting occurs, and that's why we're asking the council to let the voters approve the funding. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff, followed by Scott Denham, followed by Tim McCosker.
Good morning. I'm Jeff Battenshure, and I work for LBA Realty. We own the AT&amp;T Center Building and also 550 South Hope in the Financial District. I'm here this morning to state LBA Realty's support for the streetcar. Thank you very much. We have worked with the streetcar staff over the last year to develop what we think is a good route, and we are supportive of the route and also the funding mechanism, and are more than happy to pay our share of the assessment in order to see this developed. We think that the currently proposed route and method for taxation are generally fair and are willing to pay our assessment as well. We think it's a real positive for the residents and also for the commercial businesses in Los Angeles in order to provide the linkage for everybody to take advantage of the streetcar. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Scott, followed by Tim, followed by Boris Maisels.
Hello, my name is Scott Denham with Evoke Properties here in downtown L.A. Evoke is one of the largest property owners in the Assessment District, and we strongly support the streetcar. In South Park alone, we own the Desmond Building and over six acres of parking lots, all in the Assessment Area, and as a result, our assessment would be approximately $200,000 a year. Over the next several years, we plan to develop our South Park assets to be a mix of residential office, hotel, retail, which would include hundreds of millions of dollars of investment. Simply put, as property owners, we're happy to pay the annual assessment because in each of these cases, the streetcar will add value to our developments. It will link the residents, visitors, and workers to the other neighborhoods in downtown. It will improve the quality of life by making errands more convenient, entertainment more accessible, and daily life more interesting and exciting. It will stimulate the overall growth of downtown L.A., making it even more of an appealing place to live.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Tim, followed by Boris, and then followed by Patrick Spillane. In fact, Tim, before you start, what's up with the fan action in the back? The blue fans? Okay. Mr. McCosker.
Thank you, sir. Tim McCosker, representing System Development Corporation. And my client and I actually appeared at the Budget and Finance Committee in opposition on some technical points. And following that meeting, we submitted a letter to your body suggesting some change language, and I want to commend the councilman and the councilman's staff and some of the close-in supporters of this project for working with us and making some technical changes that were important to us and we think improves the overall efficacy of the project. And we are here to speak in support, you know, on the assurance that, in fact, you're making some modifications to essentially the transparency of where the, of how the funding will be put together and providing that as a public record to all of us. So again, I thank you. We look forward to working with you as this moves forward.
Thank you. Boris, followed by Patrick. Boris, followed by Patrick Spillane, I believe it is, followed by Daniel Taban. Yes, sir.
Hi. My name is Boris Mazels. I'm the president of the Historic Downtown Business Improvement District, and also I represent the Haas Building, which is at Seventh and Broadway. We, as the bid, we strongly support the streetcar, and we feel that it'd be an intricate part of the revitalization of Broadway and the rest of the historic core. Also, I recently had the pleasure of going down to Anaheim and in California Adventure, they have a beautiful replica of the red car. And we should have it before they have it, and we should have a better one than Anaheim has. So, I support the streetcar, and I hope it happens soon. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I need Patrick, Daniel, and then Robert Cushman. Robert Cushman, please begin to move forward. Yes, sir.
Good morning, honorable councilmembers. I'm Patrick Spillane of IDS Real Estate Group, and I'm here to strongly encourage your support of a downtown streetcar and the actions before you this morning. We own six acres of land directly north of L.A. Live and just west of Figaroa Street. It puts us in a Tier Two assessment, which represents over $120,000 in annual taxes that we will be paying to support the streetcar. It is rare in a city like Los Angeles that we can support a direct investment in our urban core infrastructure that has the potential to transform the way we will move about, our city. Investing in the last mile of public transport will unite the billions invested in hard and light rail, rapid bus lines, and dash routes serving our downtown and our suburbs. The streetcar serves at a catalytic opportunity to finally get Angelenos out of their cars and can offer up a downtown where we can traverse our urban core completely on foot and with effective public transport options. Funny fact, with the Olympics going on in London, many people...
Thank you. Thank you. Daniel, followed by Robert, followed by Steve Needleman. Yes, sir.
Good morning, councilmembers. My name is Daniel Taban of Jade Enterprises. We are a real estate property owner with holdings on the streetcar route as well as one, two, and three blocks away. We're in full support of the streetcar project. Further, we support the Community Facilities District being proposed. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Robert, followed by Steve Needleman, followed by Lisa Gritzner. Lisa? Yes, sir.
Good morning. My name is Robert Cushman. I'm vice president of operations for Brookfield Office Properties. We own and manage three major office buildings in downtown Los Angeles, two of which are located within the Community Facilities District Number Nine. Those properties are Figaro at Wilshire and Ernst &amp; Young Plaza, which include the Retail Center, FIG, at Seventh. We support the streetcar project because we believe it will provide a vital connection for the Figaro Corridor, the Historic Core, and the Civic Center. Our Retail Center, FIG, at Seventh, which opens in October, will greatly benefit from the anticipated increase in pedestrian traffic right at our front door. Although we, as property owners, don't have the right to vote on the matter, we have given the, we have been given the opportunity to provide vital input into the planning of the project. We thank you for that opportunity, and we support this project. Brookfield continues to be bullish on downtown. We believe the streetcar project will be a vital component to the revitalization of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. So, we should have Steve next. Lisa, followed by Eric Schomoff.
Good morning. Thank you for the time. My name is Steve Needleman and Jack Fashion Buildings and the Orpheum Theater. Property owner on Broadway since my father started his business in the 1940s on Ninth and Broadway. Couple of points I'd like to address. Number one, on the vote. The vote, I am taxed as a property owner all the time that I have no votes on. Los Angeles Community Unified School District, the Community College Board District. We are taxed all the time with no vote. So, to say that this is anything different than what has happened within our city, I wish it would be some other way, but that's the way it is, and that's the way the politicians have set it up. I would also like to comment on the comment that this has anything to do with Jose Weezer. As much as I'd like to give him the full credit of coming up with this concept, he has spirited this, but this happened way before he was ever in office, a good five, 10 years, a good 10 years before he came in office. There was a group of us that was supporting this project, and it has taken this many years, and I hope we get your vote today to support this project.
Thank you. Lisa, followed by Eric Schomoff, followed by Sid Moses. Hi, Lisa.
Hi there. Good morning, councilmembers. I'm Lisa Gritzner, and I'm here representing the Wilshire Grand Hotel. We are extremely excited about the $1 billion investment that the owners of the Wilshire Grand Hotel are making in the future of Los Angeles and in the skyline of Los Angeles. And we are very excited to support the streetcar. It will be a vital link between the Wilshire Grand, the iconic Wilshire Grand, and some of the amazing amenities that are sprouting up downtown and those that already exist. So, thank you, Councilmember Weezer, and the Bringing Back Broadway and LASTreetcar.org organization, and we're very excited. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, Eric, followed by Sid Moses, followed by Will Wright. Will Wright. Yes, sir.
Good morning, Eric Schomoff. My family owns and manages over 10 residential buildings downtown. We are here to support the streetcar. You know, imagine being able to go have dinner at L.A. Live, going to the Jewelry District, Civic Center, Historic Core. It'll just basically connect downtown, and that's what we need. Every city you go to in the world, the downtown is the place to be. Los Angeles, we're doing a great job, but we're still a little behind. I think what the streetcar is going to do is going to help connect all of downtown and make it one. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Eric?
Hello. I'm Sid Moses.
Oh, Sid.
Sid, yeah, that's right. And I strongly support this, the streetcar. As a downtown resident, I support it for giving us more options and connectivity between venues downtown. As a downtown businessman, I own 14 businesses downtown. And I want to see the momentum of downtown continue, and I think the streetcar is essential for that. I've visited Seattle. I've visited Portland, that have had us put in a similar system, and I've seen the economic impact, economic boom generated by that. And as a downtown property owner, I also am in support and proud to be assessed for the building of the streetcar. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wright?
Good morning. I have the pleasure of being two people at once here. Not only do I live downtown, not only do I need the streetcar, not only do I want the streetcar, but I'm also here representing the American Institute of Architects. And I'll just read as much of the letters as I possibly can. On behalf of the L.A. chapter of AIA, we encourage you and your fellow councilmembers to support the proposed creation of a modern streetcar system in downtown Los Angeles. AIA believes the proposed streetcar will improve mobility and economic growth. The streetcar has the potential to further catalyze the continuing redevelopment of downtown Los Angeles that has occurred over the last decade, adding new residents and attracting a wide variety of businesses to the urban core. AIA's strong support for the downtown streetcar is not only a function of the high demand for new transportation alternatives triggered by urban revitalization, but also a recognition that the proposed streetcar will be a sustainable, pedestrian-friendly system. We encourage the city council to support the... Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I'm going to have to ask those of you that have the blue fans to put them down now because they could disrupt the view of other individuals that are here. Mr. Weezer, your time is up. The individuals that were not afforded the opportunity to speak, their cards will be entered into the record as being in support of this project. So, with that said, Mr. Weezer, to close, maybe?
Yes, thank you very much, President. And thank you, colleagues, for listening to this. We're here simply asking that the voters decide, should we move forward or not? And some have brought up the issue of that this is taxation without representation. But as Mr. Needleman said, this is no different from school bonds, for example. Some people may own property in the school district, but the voters decide whether those bonds should move forward or not. And secondly, we have seen that this is one of the lowest assessments in some of the more recent assessments from MTA, like the Red Line, et cetera. And finally, on the issue of support, we allotted 15 minutes to pro, 15 minutes con. But if you look at the stakeholders of downtown, the overwhelming majority are in support of this in terms of when we take in it for discussion and in terms of those that will be assessed. The top 30 property owners pay for more than half of the entire assessment, and we have a clear majority of those property owners who would pay for over half of the assessment. And if you hear, see the people who are here, a number of people didn't have a chance to speak. I want to thank you for coming out. I want to thank everyone for coming out. And for those who are supporting us moving forward, if you could please stand up at this time and show the support for the streetcar, that would be very much appreciated. Thank you, and thank you for being here today. We appreciate your support. Again, colleagues, we're only moving forward to ask for a vote of the voters. One final point is that the operations of this project, some of the property owners and some of the largest property owners asked that we put some language in there that would guarantee that we will find other funding other than this assessment to operate. And we've been in very good discussions with MTA, the L.A. Department of Transportation, and some other options. But that language will be included here so that we are very clear about what we're voting on. So, thank you. I urge for your able. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer. And I do intend on supporting...
I was just reminded by a city attorney. We submitted an amending motion that clarified some technical language, and that is what is before us today.
Okay. I do, like I said, intend on supporting you on this issue if I get a fan. Don't throw it. With that said, let's prepare to vote.
Excuse me, Mr. President. Just for clarification, what's, before council to vote on first is Item 1A, which was circulated. It is a motion and also to adopt an attached resolution.
Okay, so are we voting on these individually, or...?
The first vote will be on Item 1A.
Okay, on Item 1A. Let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, the next item?
Mr. President, first, council should close the public hearing.
Okay, let's, the public hearing is closed. Next item?
Next item is Item 1. Substitute ordinance has been circulated.
Okay, so on this item, let's open the roll.
One has amended to substitute the ordinance.
Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Next?
Item 2.
Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Next?
Item 3.
Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Next?
Item 22.
Let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Is that it?
That's it for this matter.
All right. Congratulations. And if we could go forthwith on these items, ones through three, I think, in particular. Okay, that brings us... Okay, we're going to move around a little bit now. We're going to go to Item 14. Mr. Walsh, if you could start coming ahead. It's my understanding that that's one of the items that you have selected to speak on. And John, before you start, I'm going to ask you to stick around, close to the podium, because I'm going to call about three other items that you put a card in on. Okay?
John Walsh, blogging on HollywoodHighlands.org. Going down to the garage. They came here by car to tell you they need a trolley. This is another tax. It's Community Taxing District Number 1.
Speaking of Mike, John.
I'm on 14.
No, in the mic. I can't, we can't hear you.
Community Districting 14? This is a tax. HollywoodHighlands.org, another tax. This is a tax, HollywoodHighlands.org, another tax. Tax on top of tax, tax districts. You know, I'm a leftist liberal, but even I'm getting tired of taxes, and maybe everyone should just vote every damn tax down in November and start all over again since we found out they have billions of dollars at the state hidden under a mattress that they just found. HollywoodHighlands.org, vote no on everything. Let's create a tax desert and start from scratch. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Don't forget, don't go far. Okay, on this item, let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, now we want to move, Mr. Walsh, to Item 20.
Mr. President, there's a request for Item 14 to go forthwith.
Forthwith, without objection. Item 20.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or Walsh Confidential, Google Walsh Confidential. Guess what this is? It's another tax. This is a system tax for fiscal year for the special police communications. You know, some of us believe that the police should be out there ticketing motorcyclists who have deliberately disconnected their muffler. Others think we should have the police checking in porn theaters for seventy-five-year-old men masturbating. That seems to be the priority. So if you believe that the LAPD, Los Angeles Penis Division, should be fighting every fifty, sixty, seventy-year-old man jerking off alone in a theater in Hollywood, vote for this tax. Otherwise, don't vote for this tax. LAPD, Los Angeles Penis Division.
Mr. Walsh. Okay, on this item, Mr. Zine, did you press your button on this?
I just wanted to say, Mr. President, that the California Vehicle Code was enhanced regarding excessive noise from motorcycles. There's California Vehicle Code section that restricts noise on motorcycles, and Mr. Walsh keeps bringing that up, and motorcycles have restrictions on the sound.
Thank you. Now, John, don't holler. John, John, you know you can't, not from, that's a disruption, John. Please. Yeah, but you can't respond back. Okay, so on this item, let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Mr. President, there's a request for this item to go forthwith.
Forthwith, okay. Now, Mr. Walsh, we want to do twenty. You have one minute left, I'm informed. This is Item 25. Yes?
Twenty-five, HollywoodHighlands.org. This, guess what? It's another tax, local sales and use tax. Another one. Again, and again, and again, HollywoodHighlands.org. And a moment of clarification, I never said that there was no law against the motorcycles detaching.
Mr. Westney's not talking about this.
I said they're not enforcing.
All right, let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, now let's try Item 40, which was held special by cards, and that was Mr. Walsh. He's out of time. So on Item 40?
Item 40 was continued to August 31st.
Okay, then. Thirty-seven, which was held special by Mr. Murphy, Sean Murphy. Item 37, if you please come forward.
I support this item. Thank you.
John, don't go anywhere. Sean, stay close, because I'm gonna call your other item next. Okay, so on this item, let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Thank you, Sean, for your recommendation. Now, we're on Item 41.
Item 41, I'm against the project. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. No speakers in the queue. Let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, we're gonna now go to Item 21. Michael, carry on.
Twenty-one. We're taking property and putting it into a REAP program, and basically, the reason why we're doing this is because landlords fail to keep up their properties. Yet, city council members do the same thing with property in their district that they're responsible for. This is, should be illegal for you to take a property from somebody and take their income and put it into a rent escrow program when you yourself are slumlords. Yes, slumlords. You choose not to do it, and you know about it, like, just like I tell Mr. Reyes over and over, property in his district is disgusting. And I'm going to go out there and take a picture right now and develop it for you so I can have it tomorrow.
Michael, you know you, this is a, this is a thin connection. You know that. Okay, on that item, oh, no. Is Mr. Herman still here? He's gone? Because I think he was Mr. Constituent. Okay, so with that said, let's prepare to vote on Item 4. Let's open the roll.
Item 21.
Oh, 21. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, so now we want to vote on Item 4. So, Michael, I'm gonna ask you to come up again.
This is the tail end of, the beginning end of it, where you take the property, and this is $65,000, $65,000 that you're taking from constituents to put property in REAP so that you can clean up the property because it's not up to code. You heard it yourself by Mr. Reyes, there are syringes in this property, yet it's not cleaned. How, I mean, I'm just asking. Maybe somebody, maybe a city attorney can clarify this. I'm confused, and nobody seems to answer this. How do you have the audacity to put something in REAP when you yourself are slumlords? I'm asking for clarification, so maybe someone can come up and talk to me after, okay? The property in Mr. Reyes's district was stated by him to have hypodermic needles, which carry diseases, and as of today, they're not clean. He stated it was already done. So when I leave here right now, I'm gonna go take pictures, blow them up this big, and bring them back to you.
Thank you. On this item, let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, Mr. Coretts, didn't you hold Item 38? Was that a reward motion? If we could go to that item now?
Yes, I just wanted to point out that the reward process works. We actually found and prosecuted a hit-and-run driver, and I also wanted to thank Mr. Englander for expediting this payment going forward through his committee. So, just wanted to bring attention to the success of this program and to ask for your aye vote.
Thank you, Mr. Coretts. On this item, let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Yes, Mr. Coretts?
If I could also ask that this go forthwith?
Without objection. In fact, maybe we'll just send everything, Madam Clerk, forthwith. Buscaino. And I think that was Item 35, was it not?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. I rise and ask for your aye vote on this item. The San Pedro Historic Waterfront P-Bid has been an instrument of positive change in our San Pedro downtown area. This P-Bid, this P-Bid has been able to step in and provide services the city has not, from improving the overall aesthetic appearance of the downtown district to providing daytime security presence. Most recently, the P-Bid in the historic downtown area in San Pedro installed these beautiful Tivoli lights, and we had a huge welcoming reception. We closed off the streets when the USS Iowa came in, and that was a part of the, this P-Bid, very instrumental in making that happen. Especially in this time of economic turmoil, it's important that we embrace and support the business community more than ever, and it's important to give our property owners the tools to make rapid changes and improvements, especially in light of what's happening in the harbor area with, just recently, last week, we put out the RFQ to redevelop, looking for the best developer to come in, develop our historic L.A. waterfront. So, a lot of synergy, a lot of excitement, and to have this historic waterfront P-Bid in place, to continue to have it in place, will continue to really highlight the great things that are happening in the downtown San Pedro area and continue to make it a destination. And I've always been supportive of the downtown San Pedro P-Bid, and will continue offering my support and guidance to business improvement districts. And just last week, we highlighted the efforts in Hollywood, and the P-Bid in Hollywood had, what a complete transformation with the help of the Hollywood P-Bid. And I'd just like to thank Stephen Robbins, who's actually here today to support this item. And you'll find before you tomorrow an agenda item for requesting your support in removing parking meters, and the P-Bid was very influential in supporting this concept of this comprehensive parking plan that will allow free parking to support our small businesses in both downtown San Pedro and the Wilmington area. So I ask for aye vote, and I also want to publicly thank the members of the Historic Waterfront P-Bid for what they continue to do in improving the quality of life in our San Pedro area. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Mr. Laban?
Just real quick, I want to thank the good councilman of the 15th District. I've been to San Pedro several times the last few months. I see the changes. Good job, Joe.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Joe Steve Buscaino. All right, with that said, we're gonna prepare to vote on the item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, it is, everything is forthwith today. Today is forthwith Tuesday. Okay, with that said, Mr. Garcetti?
President, if, Mr. President, if you don't mind, I'd like to ask that the items on the streetcar be sent forthwith, please. Forthwith on the streetcar items, please.
We already did that, right?
We haven't said to forthwith. We did send it forthwith.
Trust me, you're in your mother's arms.
No, I want it superforthwith, that category you've created.
No more, that's a special power that can only be created. All right, so, Mr. Garcetti?
Thank you very much. Mr. President, I rise on Item Number 23 here. Mr. Laban seconded this motion. One of the most tragic losses ever endured by the members of the Los Angeles Police Department involved the kidnapping and murder of Hollywood Division Officer Ian Campbell. The circumstances surrounding his loss had a profound impact, not just on the LAPD, but on law enforcement throughout the nation. His compelling story came to be known as "The Onion Field." Campbell and his partner Carl Hedinger were kidnapped at gunpoint from the intersection of Carlos and Gower on March 9, 1963. Both were driven to a remote agricultural section of Kern County. Campbell was murdered, but Hedinger made his escape only to face other enemies in the following three years until his 1966 resignation from the LAPD. Albeit tragic, much was learned about the treatment of both of these officers. Joseph Wambach later wrote the book "The Onion Field" about Ian's murder and the subsequent trial of Powell and Smith, who were held accountable. In March, on March 13, 1963, as a tribute to Officer Campbell, the Los Angeles Police Department requested that bagpipes be played at Ian's funeral. It was the first time bagpipes were played at the funeral of a Los Angeles police officer, and since then, bagpipes have been played at every line-of-duty death of a Los Angeles police officer. In honor of the memory of Officer Ian Campbell, and with the help of the Los Angeles Police Historic Society in partnership with Los Angeles Police Emerald Society Pipes and Drums, I move today with this to name the area of Carlos and Gower in Campbell's honor and to create that, and we'll be unveiling a sign if this passes today on August 17, at the corner of Carlos Avenue and Gower Street, as we name that Campbell Square. I ask for your support.
Thank you, Councilman Garcetti. Do you have Councilman Laban on the line?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Garcetti, and I second that motion. Thank you.
Okay, see no one else on the queue? Open the roll. Close the roll. And tabulate the vote?
Fourteen ayes.
Thank you. That measure passes. Madam Clerk, next item?
Item 24, called special by Councilman Garcetti.
Councilman Garcetti?
It's a second square, a little happier note today, but at the corner of Fletcher Drive and San Fernando Road in Glassell Park, an area very close to CD 14, and that's CD 1 shares, I think, a corner of the Vandy Camp site, we have moved together with the community there to look at the remarkable progress we have made reducing crime in the Drewestar area, to hold development accountable there, and to really revitalize the services in that area. And going back to its original heritage, we are approving today the renaming of that intersection, Fletcher Square. We had a celebration doing that, but this will make it official. I gotta say, we had about 200 people that came out in the Glassell Park area, so I ask for your support in reclaiming a great square, a great place in northeast Los Angeles. Thank you.
Okay, let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Thank you. That passes. Next item, Madam Clerk?
Item 32, called special for cards, and I believe Councilman Zine has an amendment.
Councilman Zine would like to speak first before we hear the cards.
We can hear from the community, and then I'll make my comments.
Okay, we do have several cards on the table on this one. We have with us Jack Sorkin, I'd like to come on up, Jack Sorkin. Gail, I believe it's C-A-N-C, Gail. It's hard to read the writing. Okay, don't want to see Jack, Gail. Bill Nauman, Bill Nauman. N-A-U-M-A-N-N. Is that correct? I'd like to come up to the microphone, please, if I call your name. Jack Sorkin, Gail Kane. Yes. Please come to the microphone if I call your name. Jack, are you here?
I think you went to the restroom.
Okay, how about Gail? Gail, please come up to the microphone. Bill Nauman, N-A-U-M-A-N. And Donna Shul, come on up. Good day, ma'am. Please, yes, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Gail Kane. I'm a resident of Walnut Acres in Woodland Hills. Walnut Acres is in opposition to a currently slated commercial elder care facility, which would face, I believe, face Fallbrook Avenue. Walnut Acres is a lovely, serene, peaceful, semi-rural, or leaning more towards rural area in Woodland Hills north of Ventura Boulevard. It's about two and a half miles by three miles. It consists of about 20,000 people, long-term residents, that goes back to 1952, as I was talking to one person. The opposition to the commercial elder care facility is because we feel that this is not a suitable facility for this particular parcel. It's a large acre and a half parcel. It's surrounded by, excuse my cold, lousy cold, by beautiful residences. They're not uniform. They range from a couple million dollars to under half a million dollars, and we don't care. It's fine. It works. What we do care about is encroaching commercial developments. The proposed land is perfectly suited for individual continued single-family residences, and there's a strip that comes down to this vacant, well, it's not vacant, there's a very small building on the property itself. So, to build individual residences in that area would work just absolutely fine. So, we encourage the sellers to think of other avenues of selling their property. We're not against elder care facility. Okay.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Please give us your name.
My name is Bill Nauman, and I'm a resident of Walnut Acres. It's a residential and agriculturally zoned area, and that's why we moved there, that's why my children have grown up there, that's my grandchild are now living there. We have a major corporation that wants to plant a multi-storied building out in the middle of this residential area. We've been, for months, trying to get people to listen to us, and finally, the South Valley Planning Commission said, yeah, that's right, it is a massive invasion into a residential area, and it will definitely negatively impact the value of the homes of the people who live there. And it's just puzzling to me why this should go on. This corporation quotes the city council as having encouraged this by enabling legislation. Well, that enabling legislation has announced, has enabled a number of residents there to open their homes to elder care, but it doesn't impact the value of the property. I don't see why my congressman, councilman, for so many years, wants to overturn the South Valley Commission's rejection of this idea, and therefore make us pay to help a big corporation make more money. Councilman Zine, I'm surprised at you. You know, Dennis Zine, you used to be fine, but this will be shame on your previously good name.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please give us your name.
Hi, I'm Donna Shealy. I live in Walnut Acres. We understand that a 245 motion is highly unusual. In fact, during the long tenure, eight years maybe, of Councilman Zine's planning deputy, Jonathan Brand, he used the 245 process only once to respond to constituent concerns about pervasive and continuous CUP violations at the same property at issue today, when all other avenues of recourse were blocked. We also understand that there is a long tradition of fellow council members simply going along with those motions. We implore you to break with that tradition today, embrace your roles as the leaders you were elected to be, and uphold the public trust, the will of the people, and the rule of law. There is no need for a 245 motion here. The developers have the full right to appeal the South Valley Area Planning Commission's decision to the Superior Court. Our judges hear these appeals regularly and are highly competent to render a fair and reasoned judgment based on the rule of law. Yanking this matter out of a process based on standards and into an arena based on political access makes a mockery of all the area planning commissions and subverts the new city charter. Further, using the 245 process in this new era of term limits to evade constituent representation sets an extremely dangerous precedent that no council member should encourage. We ask all of you to respect the South Valley Area Planning Commission's well-considered decision and deny this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I did call Jack Sorkin. Are you here, Jack? Okay.
Okay.
Sorkin, give me your name. Your name, sir?
My name is Ken Becker. I'm a property owner on Oxnard Street in the Walnut Acres area of Woodland Hills.
Mr. Becker, can you wait? I haven't called your name yet. I have not called any, but I will call for Sir Sorkin, and I'll get to your card. Okay, just hold on for a second. Sir Sorkin, come on up. No, sir. Mr. Sorkin, let Mr. Sorkin speak.
He wants me to talk. Oh, okay. Yes, my name is Jack Sorkin, and, Mr. Zine, we are urging you to withdraw your motion to overturn SVAP decision to grant an appeal for construction of elder care facility at 6221 Fallbrook Avenue, and to demonstrate that you are a real protector of Walnut Acres, as you stated in the past. This project exceeds allowable Los Angeles municipal core density by 400%. You would never allow any other project to be built on this property with such a density. That will be the only ethical action, Mr. Councilman, on your part. I hereby urge all council members to respect the decision of South Valley Area Planning Commission and to vote no on Mr. Zine's motion in order to preserve our neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So what is your name? I'll look for your card.
Okay, my name is Ken Becker, and I'm a property owner on Oxnard Street. That's Walnut Acres of the Woodland Hills area. Thirty-three years we've been there. I support the decision of the South Valley Planning Commission in overturning the zoning administrator's granting of a construction of an elder care facility at the corner of Fallbrook and Irwin Street. I can't understand Mr. Zine's attempt to overturn the Planning Commission's decision, as he previously had pledged to his constituents that he would support our wishes.
as he previously had pledged to his constituents that he would support our wishes. Fallbrook traffic is already congested. This product would only exacerbate the problem with parking on side streets, livery vehicles coming and going, et cetera, et cetera. I do urge you all to uphold the plan as denied by the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Can we call out the next group of speakers? Ruth Feldman, Robin Goodheart, and Patty Moser, please come up to the microphone. Ruth Feldman, Robin Goodheart, and Patty Moser, please come on up. Ruth Feldman, are you here? Okay, please come up to the microphone. Give us your name.
Robin Goodheart.
Yes, ma'am, please speak.
As a longtime resident of Walnut Acres and as a constituent of Mr. Zine, I thank you for your past support of our neighborhood. What's happening here? Why is it we find ourselves in this meeting this morning on such short notice when the South Valley Planning Commission made its decision on June 28th after long and informed consideration on this complex issue? Why this unprecedented move to greenlight a commercial institution in the middle of Walnut Acres surrounded by single-family residences? Isn't the Planning Commission part of the process supposed to mean something? I ask for respect be given to the decision of the Planning Commission. They cannot be rendered toothless. I am saddened to think that the political process could be so blatantly abused. Commitment to all constituents, not a mere few, should be the practice. Walnut Acres is the unique jewel that Mr. Zine once labeled "our neighborhood." Moneyed interest should not be allowed to ruin it. Please stand up for honor, dignity, and transparency in our representative political system. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please come on up.
Hi, my name is Patty Moser. Walnut Acres is a unique community consisting of large residential lots surrounded by trees and nature. It is RA-zoned and not intended for a massive commercial elder care institution. Let's not forget, this is big business. To stand out from other facilities located in appropriately zoned areas, they want to build in our quiet neighborhood. The picture Mr. Zine and the builders present to you is entirely different from what will be in their brochures. They paint a picture of Fallbrook Avenue as a huge highway with sprawling commercial properties. It is simply not true. I am asking you to respect the well-informed decision of the South Valley Area Planning Commission and vote no on Mr. Zine's motion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ruth Feldman, are you still here, Ruth, at Walnut Acres Neighborhood? Okay, let's move forward. Grant Gilmore, Dawn Stead, and Colleen Marmar. Good day, sir. Come on up.
Ladies and gentlemen of the L.A. City Council, my name is Grant Gilmore, and I'm a Walnut Acres resident in Woodland Hills. My goal is to clarify some of the misunderstandings regarding the developer's desire to overbuild this elder care institution at the said location in our neighborhood. At the time the decision to support Walnut Acres residents against the developer was confirmed by the South Valley Planning Commission, a large neighborhood contingent of at least 75 people turned out. Keep in mind, with better than four days' notice, a much larger turnout would have happened today. The developer intends to purchase this property in order to avoid the higher purchase costs associated with acquiring a property located in a more appropriately commercial area. If approved, the developers will be allowed to maximize their misdirected profits at the expense of our well-established neighborhood. Property values in the immediate area will be adversely affected by this overbuilt, inappropriately located, 24-hour business facility. Please respect the properly informed decision achieved by the South Valley Planning Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Good day, ma'am. Please give us your name.
Hi, my name is Dawn Stead. And council members, I thank you for the attention that you're giving us this afternoon. I know you're all busy, as all of us are, but I would just ask that you pay attention as we cover a few facts, and that's that this particular project has been strongly opposed by the thousand-plus, the majority of the thousand-plus neighbors in the Walnut Acres area. And in fact, it's been opposed by all but two residents who live within 500 feet of the property in question. And additionally, there are several of us neighbors who have reached out to the owners of the property and asked them to join us in discussion as to being able to find common ground as to an acceptable commercial or residential use for this particular piece of residential property. And we just asked that you would vote no on this motion today in order to give us time to discuss with the owners what we can find as common ground, and just asked that you would all show leadership and respect the decision of the South Valley Council in voting against this motion today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, she comes on up. Nancy McLean and Dmitry Bakunstev. Good day, ma'am.
Good morning, council members. My name is Colleen Marmar, and I reside in Woodland Hills. I just completed a two-year term serving on the Woodland Hills Neighborhood Council Board. I'm also here today as an officer of an eight-year established grassroots neighborhood group called Save Oak Savannah, or a nonprofit corporation that scrutinizes and evaluates local land use decisions and those surrounding the San Fernando Valley. I was at the meeting when Woodland Hills Neighborhood Council took no action to support a recommendation for approval of this project. At that meeting, I made a motion to disapprove the project because the applicant failed to meet all the required five findings for the elder care ordinance. Because the project was shown to be material detrimental, detrimental or injurious to properties in the area, it seemed that there was testimony that showed it would create an adverse impact on the street access and circulation in the surrounding neighborhood, and that the project buildings and structures, parking, loading areas, would be incompatible with the existing development on neighboring properties. I stand here today in solidarity with the rest of the stakeholders who request that the decision of the South Valley Planning Commission be upheld. I draw your attention to a similar case that was addressed in the 2011 Court of Appeals case, West Chandler Boulevard Neighborhood Association versus City of Los Angeles. The Neighborhood Association petitioned for writ of mandamus seeking to overturn this city council's decision. The Court of Appeals concluded the city council did not comply with the relevant provisions of the city charter and the municipal code. They said the city council abused its discretion by failing to follow the municipal code. That doesn't need to happen here. There is no justification here to tamper with the well-reasoned decision of the South Valley Planning Commission. They applied the law to the facts. Woodland Hills and the surrounding communities in the western San Fernando Valley are communities that are well-informed, educated, and active in advocating for what is right regarding land use. We are not afraid to challenge bad decisions, even if it means litigation. On behalf of Save Oak Savannah, I respectfully request you deny the motion.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you very much. Okay. Our next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm Nancy McLean. I'm a member of the Woodland Hills, I'm not used to speaking in front of people. Okay, Plum Committee in Woodland Hills, and I've heard all of the pros and cons of all of this through several meetings, and I am for you upholding the determination from the South Valley Area Planning Commission. That's it. Do you all have a copy of this, or will you have access to a copy of the determination? That's all I have to ask.
Okay, there's a copy submitted to the officers.
So I can give one?
That would be passed out, yes.
Okay.
Okay, as Mr. Bakunstev comes on up, we have Albert Nichols, Betty Salverson, and I believe it's John Sundahl, S-U-N-D-A-H-L. Good day, sir.
Hi, my name is Dmitry Bakunstev. I concur with the previous speakers on the subject, and I would like to add that there is no reason to invoke the jurisdiction over this matter and to veto the decision of the commission. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good day. Please give us your name.
Yes, my name is Albert Nicholas. I've lived in the Walnut Acres area only seven years, but my fiancee has been there 37 years. You've all heard what type of community it is, so I won't repeat that. I've heard many of your names on television. It's nice to see some of you in person here. I feel that there must be some feeling of solidarity with the people who vote for you, and I feel that if the South Valley Planning Commission, after much consideration, decided to deny this monstrosity, that you would leave it to the developers to carry on the proper procedures and go into the Superior Court and not come backdoor overnight when only a few of us could get down here. And I'm probably the youngest one, but I still feel very strongly about this subject. I'm very strongly in support of the homeowners association, and without these types of associations, you don't know what's happening in the neighborhoods, and I'm hoping you'll listen to us for who we are. Thank you very much for your time and attention.
Thank you very much. As our next speaker comes up, Betty Salverson. Betty, are you here? Then we'll have Mohammed Tat, and then Monique Brier. Good day, sir. Please give us your name.
I'm John Sundahl. I'd like to speak to you gentlemen in regards to the complexity of the case. This has been thrust upon you in just seven days, and I have been going to meetings for over seven or eight months and really have just begun to understand the complexity. It's my opinion that it is not fair to ask you gentlemen and ladies to make a decision with only seven days to look at the case. The South Valley Appeals Board stated the project did not meet the five findings that are required for the project to be built, and rightfully so. Again, I ask you to uphold this appeal board decision, which was done of a, part of a long legal process in accordance with the law and good ethics. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker. Good day, sir.
My name is Mohammed Tat, and I live in Walnut Acre. On June 28, 2012, the South Valley Planning Commission denied the proposed elder care facility based on hearing the argument for and opposing this facility, the establishment of this facility. They examined all the evidence, and they denied it based on the fact that this project is way too massive, is built on a relatively small land, with all its shortcomings, and being totally out of character with the neighborhood. This project also does not meet all the five findings that are required for getting the approval, mainly condition number one, three, and four. This is a huge two-story building on a small piece of land. It's surrounded by residential properties with common property lines. The many windows of this building look directly into neighbor homes. The project does not provide enough parkings, causing traffic problems for the neighborhood. I respectfully request the council members to respect the South Valley decision in denying the project and turn on the current proposal to reverse that decision. The approach that Mr. Zine is taking is very undemocratic and is against all the principles by which we are living in this country. Thank you very much.
Good day, ma'am.
Good morning, council members. My name is Monique Brier. I'm a real estate broker. I live in neighboring, Tarzana neighborhood called Melody Acres, where an RA-zone property like Walnut Acres, like College Acres, and like a similar neighborhood in Northridge. All of these neighbors have joined together to support and to work to keep and preserve our neighborhoods. That's what my real estate business is about. That's why people move to these properties. Like all of you sitting in city council who own properties, we want the quiet enjoyment of our properties, which is our legal right. I can't imagine any one of you sitting here who would like to hear sirens blaring at all hours of the day and night, which is exactly what is going to happen and does happen with these large commercial elder care facilities inside residential neighborhoods. It ruins people's property values. You would not want somebody ruining your property values. We worked very hard using the legal process of the South Valley Area Planning Commission and do this in a democratic, honest, open, and fashioned process. I think what Councilman Zine is doing is a naked grab of power. It's not the correct use of this kind of power, and it was done so with the intent without notifying neighbors who only found out about this by accident. We're property owners, we pay our taxes, we follow the rules, and we're asking you not to just rubber stamp this project without serious, serious consideration and looking into it, because this will happen in other parts of the city. This is not just one project. This will be happening everywhere, and people don't want it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next group of speakers, Betty Salverson, Daphne Donisio. Betty Salverson, are you here? Daphne Donisio?
Daphne.
And then we have, I believe it's Zuma H., if I read this correctly. Good day, ma'am.
Hi there, my name's Dr. Daphne Donisio. It looks like I get two minutes. I know that speaker comments are really boring, but if you were able to listen to some of the points being made today, they were really good points. I understand that this case was entered several days ago, and I hope that you've had enough time to examine the evidence. I understand that you don't have the South Valley Area Planning Commission determination, you don't have the findings, you don't have that information, and I understand that this might not be something that's within your possession now. Apparently, this is something that you will be given later. I'm not one of Zine's constituents in Walnut Acres. I represent the homeowners of my neighborhood in Northridge who oppose the commercial encroachment into single-family residential zones. There is an adult daycare, community care facility business operating in my neighborhood, and it has created noise, traffic, and safety problems for us. Councilmember Zine has over 1,000 constituents in Walnut Acres who rightly oppose the elder care, community care facility business that wants to operate in their low-density zone, and that's because they're going to experience negative impacts, too. I know that Coretts neighborhood of Melrose has firsthand experience with elder care facilities. I think there's 24 within one-mile area in his district. The South Valley Area Planning Commission carefully examined the evidence regarding this issue, and so we please would like you to uphold their ruling. They determined the zoning administrator and the elder care developer couldn't meet the five necessary findings, so we ask you to please deny Zine's motion to assert jurisdiction over this issue. Thank you.
Okay, these are the last two cards, but I had seen a response, Betty Salverson and Zuma H. Okay, Councilman Zine, that concludes public comment. Did you like to speak on this matter, or would I like to go for the vote?
Well, thank you. Thank you. I want to thank the community members for coming out, and this was posted last week. Let me clarify some issues on this particular situation. What we're asking for is this matter go to the Plum, the Plan and Land Use Committee, not that we approve the project, but that we have it go to a Plum Committee. And if we look back in the history of this particular matter, in my particular history of 11 years, I've protected Walnut Acres, I protected Melody Acres, in fact, we denied a project, a similar project in Tarzana. We denied it because we didn't think it was appropriate for the community. I live within walking distance of this particular site, and when I walk down Fallbrook, I see a fire station, I see gas stations, I see shopping centers. This particular street of Fallbrook, and as the information was put out, and I received a copy of this, Walnut Acres neighborhood, Zine seeks to seek council approval of a massive commercial elder care institution on Irwin Street. It's not on Irwin Street, it's on Fallbrook. And Fallbrook is a major corridor, 45-mile speed limit, multiple lanes of traffic in both directions, and you've got a kabad, you've got churches, you've got a market, you've got everything on Fallbrook. When I look at Walnut Acres and Melody Acres in the community, I look at the single-family residence that is west of there, and I protected that for 11 years when developers have tried to build projects in there. But when I look at Fallbrook, Fallbrook is an area that is conducive to elders. We have a senior population that's expanding. Our senior population came to us and said, do an ordinance so we'd have facilities for our senior population. It used to be a school, Ivy Academy, we had a lot of complaints on Ivy Academy. We finally got rid of Ivy Academy. Now it's a vacant parcel of land on Fallbrook at the intersection in front of a bus stop. If you want to find an ideal location for a senior population that aren't driving, that aren't creating confusion in the community, that that aren't creating confusion in the community, that aren't creating problems in the community, where better would you put it than an area where they have transportation and all the amenities? They have a Kohl's, they have a Rouse, they have an Albertson, they have everything you can imagine within walking distance of this particular site. And I look at Fallbrook, and when this first came to me, I said, "Where are we going to put senior population?" And this ordinance that this council passed wants to find locations. This, to me, and I drive down Fallbrook every single day, and I walk in that area every single morning around the shopping center, this is ideal for a senior population. This is not encroaching into Walnut Acres, this is not encroaching in Meadow Acres, this is not going into the residential area. This particular site sits fronting Fallbrook. Fallbrook is a major corridor. And when I look at the information that's been put out, one lady mentioned the fire, the ambulances, there's a fire station right next door to this, after a few houses, there's a fire station, there's a Pep Boys. This particular area is an ideal location where we want to put our senior population. So what we want to do today is simply send this to our Plum Committee, where there'll be a proper review, where issues will be raised, where issues will be resolved. When it came to the Neighborhood Council, the Neighborhood Council couldn't decide which way, and I've got the notes from the Neighborhood Council meeting, the Neighborhood Council meeting was undecided. It first went to the Neighborhood Council Planning and Land Use, and they originally approved, and then it went flip-flopping back and forth. It went to the zoning administrator who approved it, it went to the South Valley Planning Commission, and they were not unanimous in their decision. So my concern is, and I find this one offensive, super Zine has a dark side. I don't have a dark side when it comes to representing the community and maintaining the integrity of the community, and anyone who wants to go into the interior of those areas will find that I have continually denied any application for anything other than a single-family residence. And we have the documents before us, is what happened in the South Valley Planning Commission. So what I'm asking this council to do is not to approve this project, what I'm asking them to do is send it to Plum, have the hearing, have the documentation, and if it has to be modified in one sort or another, that can be done, but Fallbrook, ladies and gentlemen, is a major thoroughfare. It is not a side-street project. It is not invading into the property value. This is a project that could go on any major corridor. And if you complain about the kids at Ivy Academia, where are we going to put, and some of you in this audience are seniors.
Councilman Zine?
Where are we going to put our senior population? That's what this ordinance is about, so I respectfully request that the folks that are here have respect for our senior population, have this vented out in the Plum Committee, not approve it today, but simply send it to a Plum Committee.
Thank you.
Have the proper reviewing, and I appreciate that, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. We do have two councilmembers on the queue, Councilman Correa and Councilman Corretts.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Zine, for that clarification. So is that an amendment to the written motion to indicate that this would be going to Plum then? Because I think the motion indicates...
What we want to do is move the asserting jurisdiction and then to send it to the Plum Committee.
Exactly. Very good. Thank you very much for that clarification, and I just wanted to respond briefly to this because the South Valley Area Planning Commission finding here is about 20 pages of strikeouts of what the zoning administrator found in support of this project. So the zoning administrator went to an extensive detail and analysis, analyzing this project, and came out in support of it. The South Valley Area Planning Commission responded by striking out all of those findings and replacing it with about two paragraphs that said that in its subjective view, the project was too big, and a couple of other points. So I think, you know, a number of the speakers from the public suggested that the Area Planning Commission had gone through its process. I suppose in a technical sense, that's true, but so did the zoning administrator, and the zoning administrator had over 20 pages of findings and analysis in support of this project. Here, in a span of 1,000 feet, a couple of blocks from this project, you have a Pep Boys, an Albertson's, a fire station, and the Fallbrook Mall. So I have to stand in support, Mr. Zine, if you're positioned that you at least have to look, at least have to give Plum the opportunity to look at a project like this that provides a place to live for our elderly population in a place that, you know, no one wants to have any kind of a facility right next to them, but if there's a neighborhood that can accommodate it, it's one that already has tremendous commercial development within a block or two of this very site. So I have to stand in support of Mr. Zine's motion, and I just wanted to point that out in response to some of the public speakers, which kind of, I think, were a little misleading in suggesting that the South Valley Area Planning Commission had made extensive findings. In fact, the ZA did, and the ZA's analysis supported the project. So I rise in support of Mr. Zine's motion.
Thank you. Councilman Corretts.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think it was mentioned that we have a high density of senior facilities in part of my district, and virtually all of that was approved and built before I got on the council. I know at times there have been opposition to some projects, but I have to tell you, as a council member, are there complaints about the projects and its impact? Once they've been built, the answer is really no. We get complaints about everything under the sun, but not about senior projects. They don't cause trouble in the neighborhood, so I don't know for what purpose it was mentioned and raised, except that there is a high density in parts of the city, but that's not necessarily a negative. I view it as a positive and a way to deal with our rising senior population in an intelligent way.
Thank you, councilmember. Our next speaker is Councilman Englander.
I've gotten a lot of emails on this as well and phone calls, and my new district boundaries are now right up to the edge of this project as well, and so I feel that I am a stakeholder, and I also lived on Fallbrook for many, many years, right down the street, so I know the street extremely well and the area well. The hardest thing to approve are churches, synagogues, schools, senior centers. Everybody wants them, nobody wants them in their community, nobody wants them next door, but they want them, and they need them, and they like them. Senior centers do have the, as was just articulated well, one of the least impacts in terms of to a community, and this is coming before Plum, which I'm also on that committee, and we'll look at it very closely, all these issues. But I do know the area well, and I think the councilman of the area, Dennis Zine, has done a great job at representing this area for many years, and he's done a terrific job as making sure that he works with the people, neighborhood councils, and I've talked to him about this as well. I think a lot of these questions can be asked and answered, and we should have that dialogue, and I look forward to that. But again, this 245, the idea is only to send it to Plum so we can look at those issues, look at those conditions or restrictions, look at those impacts from a different perspective and a different level. That's all it really does. But I do know the area well, and I think what was said, I absolutely agree with, that Fallbrook is a major thoroughfare with homes on it, and we have many streets like that throughout the San Fernando Valley. The fact that the entrance and exit is on Fallbrook as well, I think is something that needs to be looked at. I'm not sure why the information said, I believe that it said it was on Irwin Street on that information that was handed out. I think if we're going to have the dialogue, we've got to have an honest one, and so I do look forward to working with all of you, all the stakeholders, who are going to have an impact and a benefit on this, but let's have an honest dialogue and sit down and work through those issues as well. So, thank you.
Councilman Englander, thank you very much. Our final speaker, seeing no one else on the queue, is Councilman Zine.
Thank you. So what I want to assure the community of is the process today, if my colleagues support this, this matter will not be approved. It will go to the Plum Committee, the Plant and Land Use Committee. At that committee, there'll be a public hearing to discuss the issue or any modifications that are necessary. That's what we're asking for today. Not that we approve this, but we send it to another review. And there's been concern along the way from the Neighborhood Council to the zoning administrator, what they're going to do with this particular project in this particular area. And if you live in the area, as I do, and passed by there, and when weeds were growing, I contacted the representative, they trimmed the weeds. We now have an abandoned building that could be an eyesore in the community versus something that will be a benefit to the community. And I challenge one who says it's going to lower property value, because go down Fallbrook Avenue and count the commercial establishments, the gas stations, and everything else on Fallbrook Avenue. And my commitment to Walnut Acres, Meadow Acres remains the same. We're not going to invade that community with projects. If they want to build a single-family residence, that's fine. If someone wants to buy this parcel and build a single-family residence, that's fine with me. But Fallbrook, to me, with everything that's there, with the ordinance that this council passed on seniors, is an appropriate location for that particular site, and I will commit to that because I believe it's the right thing for that particular street, not for Irwin. So what I ask the members, and I vote on this motion to assert jurisdiction because I feel the South Valley Area Planning Commission erred in making its decision to grant an appeal on this elder care facility at 6221 Fallbrook Avenue, also ask that should you vote to assert the jurisdiction, this be referred back to Plum Committee for a hearing to determine if, in fact, zoning administrator made the correct findings under LEMC Section 14.3.1 to grant approval to the project. That's my motion on this particular matter.
Mr. Attorney, is that correct with you?
The part about referring it to Plum without council prejudging how it's going to act on it?
Right. We're not asking to prejudge, we're simply asking to assert, send it to Plum, and they will have a public hearing, and people can voice their concerns, but not to approve that project at this particular time.
There's a second? Okay. So that is before us. Seeing no one else on the queue, let's open a roll, close a roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That's adopted as amended.
Thank you. Councilman Zine? Madam Clerk, what's in front of us?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Okay, motions been posted and referred?
That clears the desk.
Okay, members, any announcements? Councilman Guuskanen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to officially be the first to welcome the new Dodger, Shane Victorino. Mr. Garcetti and I were just talking about this. He just got picked up before the trade deadline, and this player, we're so excited, it's going to add a lot of energy, excitement to Dodger Stadium, and will ultimately lead the Dodgers to the postseason this coming year. So welcome Shane Victorino from the Philadelphia Phillies.
Thank you, Councilman Guuskanen. Right in my district, that's beautiful, Dodger Stadium. Any other announcements? Seeing none? Adjourned motions, council members? Councilman Garcetti, everybody, please stand for adjourned motions.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's with a heavy heart that I adjourn today in memory of Seth Rosen, Vice President of District Four of the Communications Workers of America. He passed away two Fridays ago in an accident while on vacation in North Carolina. Seth was a giant in the CWA movement, a deeply loved vice president for the last seven years, and a member there for 30 or more years. For decades, no matter his position, he did everything in CWA, phenomenal organizing, his breakthrough political and community work, and through his last days, negotiation and representation. He loved his family deeply, he was a wonderful musician, and his special closeness with the CWA family. His love of working people, a sense of history, his purpose was in building a movement of labor and a community of justice. There's no exaggeration to say he was the beating heart of the fight for workers and communities in Ohio. He's survived by his wife Kathy and his children Amanda and Josh. May he rest in peace.
Thank you, Councilman Garcetti. Anyone else adjourned motions? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.